Good evening, everybody. I'm gonna go ahead and open tonight's August 12th meeting of the Kalispell City Planning Commission. Can you get a roll call?
Rory Young.
Here.
Kate Walker.
Here.
Pip Burke.
Here.
Shelby Lechrone.
Here.
Doug Kaufman.
Here.
Joshua Borgart.
Here.
Chad Graham.
Here. Look for a motion for approval of our July 8th, 2025 minutes.
I'll move the approval of the minutes of July 8th, 2025 as published.
I'll second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion on the minutes? All in favor of the motion signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Then move into tonight's hear the public. This portion of our meeting is where we take public comment on any item out in the community or from the audience about any item out in the community other than what's currently on tonight's agenda. If there's any public comment, please step to the mic, state your name and address.
Will be at risk supervised or not if accommodations are not made. Ashley Creek already faces water quality issues. An area full of people and pets is not a buffer. I'm thrilled to have the new Ashley Park, however, it will disturb the wildlife in that area, making this quiet area further down all the more important. Who will own that buffer land? Can you assure the buffer happens now and is protected in the future? It's already been covered that the runoff from the pavement and roofs will flow directly into the creek versus having 12 acres of filter. Homes 400-plus feet from the creek have water in their basements and shifts in their foundations. How can we assure foundations are secure far into the future? We are seeing more and more floods. I'm disappointed notices were only sent to the minimum number of citizens when this affects all residents in the Belmar addition and really in Flathead County from Ashley Lake to Flathead Lake. Some of whom rely on that corridor and its resources as livelihood to make a living. Stopping this proposal sets a precedent to protect the corridor and clean water. Thank you for the chance to comment.
Is there any general public comment not on tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing none. I'm gonna move into tonight's public hearing. There are two items on tonight's public hearing. First is File KPUD 25-03, Monterize Developments LLC has submitted applications for Silverbrook Village and amendment to the Silverbrook Plan Unit Development PUD. The property which contains 11.7 acres is currently zoned B1 neighborhood business with a PUD overlay. This proposal would maintain the underlying zoning designation. The proposal calls for 198 residential units intended to be developed as condominiums with a varying of housing types ranging from two-unit buildings to larger multi-unit buildings. The second item are files KA-25-07 and KZC-25-01. A request by the Kalispell Development Services Department and Bibler Resources Company to annex property located between South Meridian Road and the Highway 93 bypass and between Appleway Drive and Foyz Lake Road, commonly known as the Y Track. Along with adjacent property with an initial zoning designation of P1 Public. The property is intended to be developed as a park. The annexation would place approximately 25.7 acres of land in the city. After tonight's public hearing, we'll be moving into old business that will be files KA-25-05 and KCU-25-04. North Meadows Development LLC, a request for annexation, initial zoning, and a conditional use permit for a multifamily residential development at 1859 South Meadows Drive. A public hearing on the North Meadows proposal was held at the July 8th, 2025 Planning Commission meeting. After discussion, the matter was tabled to allow for additional review and discussion. That'll be coming up in old business after tonight's public hearing. Item number one.
So, Monterize Development LLC has submitted applications for Silverbrook Village, which is an amendment to the Silverbrook Plan Unit Development or PUD. The property is located at 441 and 465 Diamond Peak Drive and contains about 11.7 acres. It's currently zoned B1, which is neighborhood business with that PUD overlay. This proposal maintains that the B1 designation. Proposal calls for 198 residential units, which are intended to be developed as condominium units with a variety of housing types ranging from two-unit buildings to larger multi-unit buildings. The proposal also has 20,400 square feet of neighborhood business uses that are included within mixed-use buildings. The amendment's necessary due to an increase in density from the overall, from the original approval for the PUD as a whole. PUD is served by multiple connections to Church Drive into Highway 93 North. The Church Drive/Highway 93 intersection consists of a junior interchange. The area that is subject to this PUD amendment fronts on several city streets, including East Montour Ridge, Great Northern Trail, East Swift Creek Way, and Diamond Peak Drive. Would note that the entirety of this project is within the Whitefish School District. This is a shot of the property looking from the northwest towards the existing apartments that are to the south. As I mentioned, the property is currently zoned B1 with the PUD overlay. The Kalispell Growth Policy Future Land Use Map designates the property as part of a neighborhood commercial slash high-density residential node along with suburban residential. The designation supports the existing B1 zone on the property. The existing underlying zoning with the PUD overlay as well as the existing proposed development is substantially consistent with the growth policy designation. The growth policy provides for densities up to 20 to 40 units per acre in high-density residential areas and no specific maximum in neighborhood commercial areas. This proposal would provide about 16.9 units per acre on an overall basis. The growth policy, Chapter 4A on Housing encourages a variety of residential development that provides housing for all sectors and income levels within the community. The city services, including sewer, water, and streets are in the vicinity and available to the subject property. 694 units are allowed in the overall Silverbrook development under current approvals. Existing phases plus areas with preliminary plats plus the apartments would total 638 or 56 units left for these lots that are the subject to this application as well as the remainder of the northern area that has not been preliminary platted, which is shown as Creekside North on this overall layout. This proposal would increase the number of units beyond the existing approvals up to a total of 836 units. The maximum commercial square footage within the PUD is 120,000 square feet in terms of footprint, and this proposal would still be well under that total, which is currently about 63,000 including this development. The overall layout of the development fits within the PUD as a transition between the commercial area to the north and the apartment use to the south. Utilizes an existing landscape corridor as buffering from the highway, and the arrangement of the building is intended to provide a transition from the single-family homes to the west by placing smaller two-unit buildings, which should have the appearance of townhomes, on the western perimeter of the site with the larger buildings closer to the highway. The design incorporates sidewalks on-site and connections to the bike path within the highway landscape buffer. In terms of stormwater, it's anticipated that the development will tie into the existing stormwater facilities in the public right-of-way, and then those facilities connect to a private storm pond. You can see those in blue in the middle of the site just to the southwest of this development. As part of the design review, Public Works will review the drainage of the site to ensure that the existing pond is sufficient capacity for storage and treatment. Fire Station 62 is located approximately three and a half miles away from this phase, providing adequate response time. Should be noted that an additional fire station is planned for construction just to the west of the property in the northwest corner of the Silverbrook PUD. The lot for the station will be platted and transferred to the city with Phase 1 of the Riverside North subdivision. Under city regulations, the proposal is considered to be multifamily slash mixed-use. While there is an ownership interest as condominiums, open space and recreational amenities are reviewed under the multifamily standard, which requires 500 square feet of land or the equivalent amenities to provide a recreational component. The 198 units would require 2.27 acres of the equivalent value in the recreational amenities. The proposed layout includes two specified park areas totaling 0.85 acres along with the clubhouse and other site improvements, which will likely exceed the minimum requirements. The use of multiple buildings also allows for areas of green space throughout the site. And just stepping through the different types of housing units you'd see, again, on the west in yellow, there's the two-unit townhomes. Those are the ones that are kind of facing off towards the perimeter of the site with single-family going off to the west. In blue, there's another style of two-unit townhomes. As you move more towards the center, in the pink buildings, those are the ones that have the mixed use, which would have the retail and office type of use on the main floor with residential above it. You'd see with purple, there's back-to-back rowhouse condos. Orange is also rowhouse condos, and in the red would look more like apartment buildings, but again, all of those would be condo buildings, again totaling the 198 units. There's central road running through the center of the property, which should have angled parking. I touched on that in just a minute. That central road is public right-of-way. All the other travel lanes on-site would be on-site and be part of the parking lot, basically in terms of what a review would be. There's no additional deviations from the zoning or subdivision regulations from the existing approvals with the existing PUD. Water and sewer service to the development would be provided by the City of Kalispell. The applicant will extend existing mains from within the adjacent right-of-way. The system for the development will be reviewed and approved by Kalispell Public Works Department in accordance with standards for design and construction. The on-site water mains will be publicly owned and maintained. As such, utility easements for the mains and related appurtenances would be granted to the city, and the on-site sewer mains would be privately owned and maintained. There is adequate capacity within the city's systems to accommodate the project. Since the lots are already developed and served by existing streets, no extensions are required. However, any improvements such as streetlights or boulevard trees that are necessary to bring the frontages to city standards would be required. As I mentioned, on-site traffic circulations reviewed as part of the multifamily parking lot development and not treated as private streets. The dimensions and layout of the on-site design will be reviewed as part of the building and site review permit process to ensure compliance with city standards and should incorporate pedestrian connectivity throughout the site. Access to the streets, the public street should be limited to common approaches as shown on the submitted site plan with no individual accesses from any specific unit or building being allowed. Although East Swift Creek Way, which is the north-south public road separating the two parcels here, is an existing public street. The proposal does call for angled parking, as I mentioned, within the right-of-way. Angled parking is not prohibited under city standards, although it's not typically part of a street design. As such, it would be appropriate to include conditions to better incorporate the angled parking into the existing street, and conditions should include a long-term maintenance agreement for striping and posting signage for no overnight parking. A traffic impact study is required for the development. Under city standards, the developer needs to maintain or improve the level of service at any impacted intersections. Condition of approval would require any mitigation to be implemented that would be necessary to meet that standard. The applicant did submit TIS that was prepared by WGM Group from June of 25. The TIS recommended an eastbound right-turn lane be constructed at the intersection of Highway 93 South bout ramps and Church Drive based on MDT's criteria for right-turn lanes, and approval from MDT would be necessary for the construction of that improvement. This slide shows the phasing with Phase 1 being the western portion, which is primarily the two-unit townhomes, but also incorporating some of the mixed-use buildings. Phase 2 would be on the east side with some of the larger residential buildings, and then Phases 3, 4, and 5 kind of filling in as we're running through the middle. With that, staff would recommend that the Kalispell Planning Commission adopt Staff Report KPUD 2503 as findings of fact and recommend to the Kalispell City Council that Silverbrook Village, as an amendment to the Silverbrook PUD, be approved, subject to 21 listed conditions, and be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, staff?
I have two. The first is, you mentioned this was in Whitefish School District. Does that transfer to Kalispell with the development?
No, so school district boundaries are independent of any city limits lines, and so the only way that they can be moved is the school districts have to reach an agreement, and they take that to the county superintendent, who then would change that. So, it's up to the school districts if they want to make that change, and there's nothing the city can do to require that or to make that change for them.
Okay. My other question had to do with the angled parking in the right-of-way, and you, I think you mentioned that no overnight parking would be allowed on that? Or signage would be, need to be in place in that instance?
Right.
I'm assuming for snow removal and that sort of thing. Can they, do they meet their parking requirement without those spots?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Further questions? Okay, I'm gonna open this item up for public comment. If there's any public comment, please step to the mic and state your name and address.
Mike Brody, 4 through 1, First Avenue West. I'm with WGM, the consultant on this project. I think the, both Ms. Walker's questions get answered by PJ there, but we do have all the on-site parking included as a part of it, and that would be more to augment the neighborhood commercial uses there. I did want to request from the commission to review that Condition 6 on this. It does, I guess, maybe provide some clarity on that. It does note regarding stormwater pond and aesthetics for this, in particular, this development has already been final-platted. There is a stormwater lot that has been included in that final plat and a pond that was designed to serve this development. We did include stormwater calculations for that, and I guess I just want to clarify that that condition seems more geared towards the future phases of Silverbrook, and if there is any language we could add in there. I guess I'm trying to avoid going and rebuilding a pond that's already been functioning for at least five years and vegetated and everything else. So, this does, with the improvements that we've changed here, we're still well within the capacity of those facilities. And again, these lots already exist. They were already final-platted, and so I guess I'm just trying to not open up a can of worms with that condition. But if there are any other questions, I'd be happy to answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Further public comment? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna look to the commission for a motion. On KPUD 25-03.
I'll move the Kalispell Planning Commission adopt Staff Report, can't number KPUD-25-03 as findings of fact and recommend to the Kalispell City Council that Silverbrook Village, as an amendment of the Silverbrook PUD, be approved, subject to the conditions as published.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion?
The item number six.
Yeah.
So, in terms of item number six, it's a typical condition that we attach in all PUDs. I'm not sure if that was necessarily included with the original Silverbrook PUD. One of the reasons we included it in there is that because there's not a final storm design on-site, that it's still within the realm of possibility there would be an on-site facility, and we just want those to look good. We don't want, you know, open pits filled with rock, basically. And as far as the existing one, I don't think anybody has any issues with the aesthetics of that, but it is a pretty standard condition anymore anytime we've got particularly a PUD involved to include that.
Can you explain to me the mockery that would occur if we kept it?
There really wouldn't be any mockery if you kept it. I don't think, again, that there's any real issue with one that's existing there. It's more in case because we don't have a final stormwater design, and we don't know if there's going to be something on-site that we want to make sure that whatever they potentially might have to develop on-site. If they don't have to do anything on-site, there's probably nothing that they need to do in connection with this.
Okay.
I think that the danger is more on the other side, that if there's just an open storm pit right off of the road, that you probably wouldn't want there, and part of having a PUD is having a little bit more control over the type of design. So, I would recommend just leaving it in there. It's probably much ado about nothing when it comes down to it.
So, as long as the existing pond is still functioning appropriately, until that goes beyond capacity, then this will not even come into play?
Right, yeah. With the design that they have there is fine. If for some reason they needed to expand it, we'd want that expansion to be done in a way that is presentable, and that's, it's a fail-safe provision in there. It's not needed to create any issues.
Any other discussion? Okay. Roll call.
Pip Burke?
Aye.
Joshua Borgart?
Aye.
Doug Kaufman?
Yes.
Shelby Lechrone?
Aye.
Kate Walker?
Aye.
Rory Young?
Aye.
Chad Graham?
Aye. Okay, motion carries. When is this in front of City Council?
Yeah, September 2nd, Tuesday, September 2nd.
Okay, yeah. September 2nd. Okay, moving into the second item tonight.
I need to.
Oh, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Planning Commission. Donnie Macbeth, Planner 2. Welcome, everyone. This presentation covers a joint application from Bibler Resources Company and the City of Kalispell to annex and rezone approximately 36 acres of land along Ashley Creek. The proposal is part of a broader initiative to create a contiguous public park and preserve the Ashley Creek corridor. We'll go over background, zoning changes, growth policy alignment, and staff recommendation. This is a two-part request, annexation of approximately 26 acres into the city. This includes parcels owned by Bibler Resources and parcels already owned by the city but currently located outside city limits. A zone change for 10.5 acres from B1 neighborhood business to P1 public for land already in city limits. Together, these changes would create 36-acre unified public space. This effort aligns with Kalispell's broader goals in ecological preservation, recreation, and urban connectivity. The subject property is located 301 Fernway. It lies between South Meridian Road, Highway 93 bypass, Appleway Drive, and Foyz Lake Road. The site includes Ashley Creek corridor and is surrounded by mixed uses, residential, commercial, and formal industrial zones. The park would serve as a green anchor in a rapidly developing part of town. The annexation area is currently zoned County I2 and R1. The area subject to the zone change is zoned City B1. The property has been vacant for years and once used as a lumber mill. Those industrial buildings have since been removed, and the area now functions as a transitional open space. The proposal transitions the land from outdated industrial use to protected public space aligned with community needs. The proposed zoning for the entire area is P1 public. This designation allows a broad range of public uses, parks, trails, school civic facilities, et cetera. P1 zoning can be applied across all future land use categories. Here it's being used to create a permanent public parkland and conserve natural features like Ashley Creek and associated wetlands. The project strongly supports the Kalispell's growth policy. The site lies within the city's annexation boundary and is surrounded on three sides by city zoning. The growth policy encourages infill and redevelopment, preser, preser, ah, preser, ah, sorry, preservation of natural corridors, and expansion of parkland, and a smart growth practices. Bringing this land into city limits and a public zoning designation directly aligns with goals and allows for consistent long-term stewardship. The property is well-served by existing infrastructure. Sewer, water, refuse service will be provided by city upon annexation. Electrical services provided by Flathead Electric, gas services through Northwestern Energy, and emergency services, including fire and police, will transition from county to city jurisdiction. Because the land will remain open space, there are minimal. Because the land will remain open space, there are minimal new demands on services. We expect minimal impact on transportation. A park will generate less traffic than commercial or residential uses. If eventual development of the park results in more than three hundred vehicle trips per day, a traffic impact study will be required. Importantly, this site presents opportunities for expanding Kalispell's pedestrian and trail networks, potentially leaking into the park line trail rails and trails system. The proposed zoning brings many benefits, preserves Ashley Creek's corridor, provides open space and recreation opportunities, enhance neighborhood livability and walkability, protects against incompatible redevelopment, industrial high-density commercial uses, increases adjacent property values by improving the natural environment of view sheds. Staff recommends Planning Commission adopt the findings of this report and forward a positive recommendation to the city council. Annexation of twenty-five point seven acres with initial P one zoning, rezoning of ten point five acres from B one to P one. This action supports the growth policy, aligns with the public interest, and allows for long-term community use and environmental stewardship. Thank you, Commissioners, if there are any questions, we would be happy to answer.
Any questions on this item? Gonna go ahead and open this up for public comment?
Doug Andrews, live at six forty-four Eighth Avenue West. And, uh, this project is in my neighborhood. Problem, I think this is a great, would be a great benefit to Kalispell. My only concern is, uh, traffic. Seventh, uh, street has gotten very busy because of the bypass and the lack of access on and off the, uh, bypass at Sunnyside. And the people wanting to put another development in there, which is just gonna increase others. Grade school on Meridian, and there's another grade school in the neighborhood and the high school. I've been at this location since eighty-seven. And, uh, the traffic is getting really bad. The junction of Seventh and Meridian is backed up quite a bit, and, uh, the other problem is the, uh, cut through town. People coming up north and want to access the south side of town. Either you can get off at, uh, Church Drive, not Church Drive, uh. Well, it's where the, uh, the pound is cemetery, you can get off there. And that's pretty far south of, uh, South Side Kalispell. And, uh, there's no access for that Sunnyside. Off the bypass. I think, uh, that needs to be addressed at some point. There was an option to run a road at the first light south of Kalispell by the old Rosar's Building, which now is Salvation Army. That's the first light south, actually, south of town. And that would, could have been a, a connection for the bypass and people coming up north to access the south side of town. They wanna access the north side of town, they can go all the way up to Highway two. And go either way on Idaho or Highway two. And, uh, I guess there's some things that could be done to take care of the, the traffic and the speed, speed is another factor on, on Seventh Street. Some speed bumps or dips like they have down on, uh, I think it's Eleventh. At the intersections, we gotta slow down from, otherwise you're flying through. They often have a speed sign up, and, uh, that doesn't seem to make any difference. It's just a busy neighborhood, and it's part of the, it's always been a cut through town from the south to the north. Coming, uh, up Seventh or Eighth Avenue, even if all the city trucks come up, uh, most of them come up Eighth Avenue, some of them come up Seventh Avenue. And then, uh, use Seventh Street to go over to, uh, Meridian. So, I mean, this has always been a, a problem or a cut through, a short, shortcut for that everybody knows, and it just continues to get more and more traffic. And, uh, with the elementary schools, it's actually three with the, if you count the new one just south of town. So there's three elementary schools, a high school, and, uh, this cut through town, uh, just makes it crazy, so that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, I'll look to the commission for a motion for annexation, K A twenty-five zero seven.
Uh, I move that the Kalispell City Planning Commission Adopt Staff Report, K A dash twenty-five dash zero seven, as findings of fact, and recommend that to the Kalispell City Council that the twenty-five point seven acres of land be annexed into the city of Kalispell with the initial zoning of P one, uh, with the listed, nope, there aren't any listed. I mean, yeah, here we go.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion? Uh, I guess I would just ask about, uh, T I S traffic impact study later on, if it gets over the, you know, three hundred trips per day for the, the park. What, how do we know that trigger's been met?
Typically, that would be a review of the, um, I T E trip generation manual, and so as the park expands and things are placed in the park, we'd review that manual to determine what, uh, increase would be expected from that.
Okay. All right, thanks. All right, uh, roll call.
Rory Young?
Aye.
Joshua Borgart?
Aye.
Kate Walker?
Aye.
Pip Burke?
Aye.
Shelby Lechrone?
Aye.
Chad Graham?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, is there a motion for, uh, K Z C twenty-five dash zero one? Zone change?
Uh, I move that the Kalispell City Planning Commission Adopt Staff Report, K Z C dash twenty-five dash zero one, as findings of fact, and recommend to the Kalispell City Council that the Kalispell official zoning map be amended by rezoning ten point five five acres of land from city B one neighborhood business to city P one public.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Pip Burke?
Aye.
Kate Walker?
Aye.
Joshua Borgart?
Aye.
Shelby Lechrone?
Aye.
Rory Young?
Aye.
Chad Graham?
Aye. That motion carries, um, I take it this is also September second in front of city council? So, um, anybody wanting to give public comment in front of city council on this item, that would be the day. Same room. So that concludes tonight's public hearing, uh, we'll be moving into tonight's old business. Uh, it's the filed K A twenty-five dash.
Denial or an amendment or something thereof, happy to answer any questions, but to start off, Donnie will provide a brief presentation because since that time, there was some additional materials submitted to the Planning Commission um, to hopefully try and answer some of those questions that were outstanding.
So Jared, um, procedurally here, because we've already done annexation, we're looking at only K C U?
That's correct, just the conditional use permit was tabled, there was already
Okay.
the annexation and initial zoning, those actions have already been handled.
All right.
Good evening, Commissioners and public, thank you very much for being here. At our last meeting on July eighth, twenty twenty-five, the North Meadows multi-family project was tabled to allow time for additional information on key topics such as traffic and site conditions. The applicant has since provided supplemental materials submitted on August first of twenty twenty-five. Addressing these points tonight, we're here to present the updated proposal, R A one zoning and conditional use permit for, for a new residential development in Kalispell. This project advances the city's goals for compact, for compact growth, housing diversity, responsible infill, while integrating seamlessly with the surrounding neighborhood. Now I'm handing it off to Keith to go into further details.
Thanks, Donnie. Uh, since the previous meeting, a supplement to the traffic impact study was provided by Ablyn Traffic Services. The addendum summarized data from the T I S indicating that Bluestone Drive currently carries about one thousand daily trips. The proposed North Meadows project would add about five hundred daily trips to Bluestone at full build-out, bringing the, uh, average annual daily traffic to about fifteen hundred. This volume is within the acceptable capacity for a local street. Vehicle speeds were also provided, the average speed was twenty-six miles per hour with the eighty-fifth percentile at thirty-two miles per hour. Concerns about congestion from the baseball games at Beg Park were noted, but those events are not directly attributable, attributable to this project. I would note the, per the scoping of the T I S, the development fell into a class one, um, scoping. Um, there's five classes, um, the lowest class is zero, second lowest is class one, this was a class one, requiring intersection analysis for up to a quarter mile from the development. Only two of the six intersections evaluated were required by the scoping document. Um, the additional four intersections were evaluated as requested by, uh, myself. Um, concerning street conditions, the condition of Bluestone Drive was another concern. Bluestone was overlaid in two, two thousand sixteen, and the annual pavement, pavement condition index provided scores between ninety-five and ninety-nine, um, out of a hundred, and is rated in good to very good condition. The pavement widths range from twenty-eight to thirty-two feet, which is the same width as a current, um, standard city local street for the pavement, um, not including curb and gutter. This width allows for two-way traffic. Um, heavy vehicles such as garbage trucks, sewer vac trucks, and snowplows already use this road regularly and do not create any structural concerns. The pavement surfacing depth is equivalent to a current standard of, uh, four inches of asphalt and fifteen inches of aggregate base and subbase. This is a picture of Bluestone looking west towards Belmar. And this is a picture of Bluestone looking west, um, west of the Belmar intersection. And finally, uh, an inter, a picture of Bluestone looking west from the intersection of Bluestone um, and South Meadows Drive, just for some perspective.
Neighborhood compatibility was also a major consideration. The growth policy designates this area as urban residential, and R A one zoning is consistent with this designation. The project is designed with two-story buildings staying under thirty-five feet in height rather than three stories as an uncommon family, multifamily development. This choice reduces impacts on the surrounding properties. Additionally, setbacks have been increased to thirty-five feet compared to the required five or ten feet, providing more buffering and space for landscaping. A landscape and open space plan is included to further soften impacts. The project also incorporates a significant open space and amenities. There will be walking path looping through the property and connecting to the South Meadows Drive extension. A playground will be provided, and the site design preserves native buffer areas along Ashley Creek. Landscaping includes trees, planning beds, and lawn areas. The clubhouse located within one of the buildings will provide a leasing office, resident lounge, coffee bar, small work area, and a gym. Up here is a geotechnical investigation, if you have any questions, Keith would be happy to answer that. That gives you a quick idea of what, uh, they went through to get this analysis through that property. In summary, the applicant has addressed the concerns raised during the July Planning Board Meeting. Traffic impacts are within acceptable limits, the streets are in good condition and meet city standards, neighborhood compatibility has been improved through reduced height, increased setbacks, and landscaping. And finally, the geotechnical report confirms the site is suitable for development. Thank you, Commissioners, if there are any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Just so I'm clear, they've now increased it to thirty-five feet?
The distance.
Correct.
The distance between, yes, thirty-five feet.
Their zone.
Buffer, so if you look at this picture here, uh, you see the existing fence area, they had, they put that distance there, thirty-five feet of landscaping area, where previously there was five to ten feet. So they've added all of this distance to buffer and not, and including that they're not going three stories, which a typical multifamily usually does, uh, they're saying, uh, two stories.
Thank you.
Can you talk about the buffer from Ashley Creek a little bit? I know it was noted as fifty-five to two hundred feet originally. Uh, Fish Wildlife and Parks calls for two hundred feet, so I'm just, I'm looking for a little clarity on that, if you could speak to that, please.
Yeah, there, so the city of Kalispell has setback regulations for subdivisions, there's no subdivision here. Um, so, and Fish Wildlife and Parks, they have basically a standard recommendation that's actually not part of state law, so there's really no set standards of what it, what it should be. Um, in this case, there's, there's a number of things, even, even with a conditional use, or sorry, if there was a subdivision involved, there's a number of instances where the, the setback could be reduced based off of sound scientific evidence, um, whether it's hydroic soils, if there isn't any hydroic soils, if it's truly a wetland or not, if the geotechnical analysis supports it. Because generally, there's a number of things to consider, whether it's wildlife, wildlife habitat, um, wildlife corridors. Um, it's sloughing that's happened along a lot of our rivers, so that's where that two hundred foot setback generally comes from. Um, so there's really no set state law, um, Fish Wildlife and Parks has general requirements that kind of apply to all waterways. Um, so in this case, it's about just trying to balance what the geotechnical analysis says um, with what our own requirements are, because we actually, like I said, when it comes to zoning and conditional use permits, have no setback requirement whatsoever. So in this particular case, we're actually, through the C O P, able to mitigate that as much as we can. Um, happy to answer anything else with that. Also, in the, um, we tried to rely on our subdivision regs as much as possible with this in regards to, um, the setback, obviously, that Sal- Obviously, that southwest corner, it's impossible to meet the two-hundred-foot, given where the creek is with the, where the entrance to the property is. So that's something to consider. And just all the remaining open space that they were able to maintain. The subdivision regulations do also allow for parks and trails to be within that setback. Certainly, planning commission could consider more of a natural landscaping if that was something, but we would also want to consider fire hazard. Natural landscaping can be tall grasses, which next to building isn't a good thing either for a fire hazard. So just trying to get a bit of a middle ground there with regards to what city regulations are and state regulations.
I've just got a quick question about the geotech. I've kind of read through the report. You sort of glossed over, I don't know if very many people here have read it or looked at it, but if you don't mind just giving a really quick summary just to show where they tested and kind of their summary of their findings.
That's gonna take a few minutes for us to pull up. It's kind of tucked in along documents.
The applicant could probably answer that best. Yeah, and they're here. So if that's a question you want to have them.
We can't hear you unless you use your microphones up there.
Microphone's on. They're on, but sometimes we have to get closer.
Apologies.
What's that? Okay. So.
I was actually just wanting a quick summary of the geotech report that was issued after the last meeting, just to show you all that they have done work and that there have been recommendations from the geotech. So I just wanted a quick summary.
Yeah, I think Toby from Jacola could fill us in on that very well.
Yep.
If you'd be happy to step up.
Thank you, Toby McIntosh. I'm with Jacola Engineering, just for the record. So prior to the July public hearing, we had all the field work done on the geotechnical investigation, and he provided us the slope stability recommendation, which set, I actually don't have the number in front of me, but I think it was a twenty-five or thirty-foot building setback based on the existing soil conditions. Since that meeting, we got the full geotechnical report, which kind of in line with what's required for a commercial building permit, provided recommendations for foundation drainage, the slope stability in this case, pavement recommendations, you know, imported fill, those sorts of things. So the geotechnical investigation work itself included, I believe it was twelve borings. Depths ranged from ten feet to thirty-five or forty feet, going from memory. The deeper borings are often done to provide building-specific issues. Sometimes you find liquefiable soils down below the ten-foot depth. The geotechnical engineer that worked on this was actually involved in the slope stability analysis on Rimrock back in two thousand eleven. It would have been under the company NTL at the time. It's now Alpine Geotechnical. So I think as we kind of touched on in the supplemental information, a single-family townhome subdivision residential project does not require building-specific geotechnical reports to be completed. At the time of the subdivisions on either side of us, the rules look quite a bit different. I'm not sure if they even needed to do. In a current subdivision, for example, if this were a subdivision, you have to look at suitability of basements or crawl spaces. In this case, the site-specific geotech provides us criteria for everything from building settlement, placement of fills, preparation for building slabs, preparation for utilities and backfill and so on. So I would say from my twenty-plus years of practicing, the geotechnical report that we received is in line with what we would expect on a commercial permit project, even though it's a multifamily residential. Does that help answer your question?
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Further questions? I guess a question I would have would be the trail system that would be tying into the sidewalk. I remember reading in the supplemental that that was opened up for the neighborhood to walk.
Yes, that was a part of the discussion. Certainly, clarity on that, but I think the intent is that trail system, I know a lot of the public utilizes a lot of that property as it is, and I don't think, don't want to speak for the applicant themselves, but yeah, there was not any intention to them, for them to be gating that to anything, but that trail system and park system would be open to basically the residents in the area as well.
Okay. At this time, I'm going to open this item up for public comment. I'm going to reiterate, as I did last month, I want to keep public comment respectful for everybody in the room. So please step to the mic, state your name and address, and give us your comments.
My name is Astaris Drohlcar. I live at seven hundred Sunnyside Drive at Seventh Avenue West. I think if the city supports this project, it is misguided. At Seventh and Sunnyside, there are often only seconds between cars and sometimes backed up. Not every road is meant to be a highway. We always knew a road was planned. That one-hundred-year floodplain has flooded twice in the twenty-five years I've lived here. Once, we kayaked it and could not touch bottom with our paddles in many places. The mind has many ideas. This development is not a good one. If Roger Foley has a goal to make money, that is fine. It is just important to consider others in the process. If you already know how to make money, there will be other opportunities that make more sense. Did any of you grow up somewhere where there was a woods or a vacant lot or a field to play in? It's important for us to explore. I watched ants, spiders, and birds. I was outside. Enjoying the earth is basic to being human, to relate to the earth and sky and animals, not just being a cube or behind a screen. Any growth needs to consider this. It sounds like there is a great deal of consideration with parks and such, but we are becoming a big city. I don't want to cover things that were covered in the last session, but people have stepped up and said, hey, there's a lot of vacant apartments and things because people can't afford the rents. Anyway, I saw a video where a little girl did not know what a dandelion was. Yet she knew corporate logos. It tore at my heart. Another time, I heard a mother ask her daughter what she learned at her first day of school. She said, I learned to stand in a line. In your heart of hearts, I don't think that's what you want, to see us disconnected zombies who just get in line. Did you know that EMFs can be changed to emit positive frequencies? We have been guinea pigs in an out-of-control experiment, and it's time to end it. I appreciate Councilman Graham saying this didn't feel right. We need this council to feel and to hold the line for us. It's a big ask, and I appreciate your work. And I thank you for the opportunity to speak before you. It's our right to always speak, here in the land of the free, the land no longer dictated by the mighty dollar, where the people are not masked and separated nor disregarded in their pursuit of happiness. We want what's beautiful and good for all of us, as well as the individual. Mr. Foley, if you have interest, I'm willing to see if a few neighbors want to meet with you to talk about another plan. You are welcome to stop by.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Diana Marshall, nineteen twenty-three, Bluestone. I just want to briefly just say that they addressed the safety concerns, and I did see that where they had the traffic counters, and I noticed they were put well beyond the ballfield and the dog park. And that ballfield and dog park in the summer can just become like there's not a road there. There's kids, there's a lot of congestion, and I don't, I don't think that was taken in, that safety concern there was taken because those counters were way beyond those boundaries of that dog park and the ballpark, and they interconnect in the summer. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Can we not do the applauding and everything? Because like I said last time, it's an intimidating feature of public comment when you have people that could possibly be supporting the project. It's not necessary.
Hello, my name's Judy Dawson. I live on Bluestone, the nineteen-hundred block. I've been in that home before the bypass was open, and since the bypass has opened, the traffic on Bluestone seems to be the only route to get there. You use Bluestone for Airport Road, for the elementary school, and to get on the bypass. Now, I understand there's going to be ninety-nine family units. Does anyone know how many apartment units there's going to be? Because you have to figure an average household has two cars per house. So you take two times ninety-nine, that's two hundred. Then you take two times how many apartments? Because apartments are so expensive that people cannot afford one person living there, so they always get a roommate to help with the cost of the apartment. So you take two times how many apartments, two times how many units, and that's how much traffic is going to be going down Bluestone as the main route to get to Airport Road and to the school and to the bypass. That's too much traffic, too much traffic. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Amy Barton, and I reside at nineteen seventy-eight Bluestone Drive. My husband and I purchased that property about twenty-five years ago, and at that time, it was mostly manufactured homes, and it hadn't been built out yet, much beyond our address. And in the twenty-five years, it's grown and stick houses have been built, and I'm all for growth if it's prudent and responsible. And in the time that it's grown, traffic, of course, increased and continues to do so. And for whatever reason, when people hit my corner and see the straight stretch, they think it's the Indiana five hundred or whatever the race car is. I feel like, where can I get a speed hump like they've got on Denver? Who do I ask about that?
We're just taking your comments.
Okay, so just to comment, because I have questions. Is the builder here? I have actual questions.
Yeah, we're taking your comments.
Okay, well, I don't have.
If you have questions, you can send them to the planning department or us individually in the City Council.
Okay, City Council.
Through email.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Denise Chambers, and I live at one nine seven four Bluestone Drive, and I'm closer to Beg Park. And the traffic on that road is just atrocious. We don't have sidewalks where we're located, but we see a lot of kids ride their bikes and families walk along the road. And the speed on that road is terrible. People treat it like a quarter-mile speedway. They take off once they come around that little curve, and they gun it. And then the same thing coming the other direction, they do the same thing. I've been in the subdivision for twenty-nine years, and I've seen it grow tremendously. The last thing in the world we need is more traffic. And the worst thing that's going to happen will probably happen soon. I'm surprised it hasn't already happened yet, that somebody get hurt or killed on this road because of the fact that there are no sidewalks and people treat it like it's a speedway. If any one of you would like to come to my home and stay there for a few days and watch the traffic, listen to it, hear the people gun up and down the street, you're more than welcome to. I also have a camper you can stand. But it really needs to be addressed, seriously, that any more traffic on that road is just going to make it worse. You can't even park on the road. There's no place to park your car on the street. You can up a little further, but you can't on this particular part of the street. So my address and my concerns is that we don't need any more people building another complex near us. We have a hard enough time as it is with everybody using Bluestone Drive on their way in and out to the bypass. They took away the access in the back, other than the fact that you can go through the subdivisions there, through Seventh or Eighth Street, this street, but nobody wants to go through the residential area. Everybody wants to come through Bluestone. So please take all of that into consideration. It's very important that we don't lose a life. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, I'm Nicole Marshall Fuzaro, and I live at nineteen twenty-three Bluestone Drive. The concerns that I also have is that there's only one way in and one way out for, I mean, approximately at this point, two hundred people. So in case of an emergency or even that one road being blocked off, there's, how would they get out? And I mean, they're surrounded by homes and then also by fences and then also by a river. So I don't understand that safety aspect. I also, the traffic, just as everyone has said, off of Bluestone and Denver are very hard, like they're very busy. And with the traffic test that they did, the new one, also as noted before, they did do it after the ballpark and after the dog park, which from the last time, that was meant to also be to include all of that information. They said at some point, I don't know, I didn't really understand, but they said something about that not being involved, but I don't understand how that's not involved because that is the exit. I mean, if they, they're going that way, they're not just out of the way of everything and no one's around at, after Bluestone Drive. They have that little area there and airport to get to Airport Road. So it's not counted as an exit to me because you're just going into a more crowded area. So in case of another, any emergency, you have that one exit for two hundred people, and then on top of that, you have all of your residents that are surrounding it exiting this one area. I also noticed that in the traffic count that they changed the number. Last time, I believe it was over six hundred additional traffic counts, but this time they said five hundred. So I don't understand how that changed and why it changed. And also, that's not including then the ballpark and the dog park. So it's very different than what was given there from what I saw. Anyway, that's what I can think of right now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Cal Marshall. I live at nineteen twenty-three Bluestone. And I think the concern that the majority of the neighbors have is the fact that Bluestone is used as a main thoroughfare to get to the south. The whole west side of Kalispell empties through Seventh Avenue onto Ashley Drive to Bluestone and out Beg Park. And so the numbers that are given are skewed because of where it was placed, because that doesn't include local traffic, the ones who are coming from Seventh Avenue and coming home. It doesn't include anyone going out South Meadows, going over to Teal, which they do. It doesn't include any of the other exits. So it's just Bluestone, and it was right at the corner. So the average speed of twenty-six miles an hour is on a pretty sharp corner. So when they get to the straight stretch, I almost got T-boned today just trying to get out of the driveway. So when they get to the straight stretch, I almost got T-boned today just trying to get out of the driveway. So they, they fly down, that's already a problem. That Bluestone Drive is already a problem because of the congestion. So, so adding this doesn't seem reasonable to, to me. I think all of us would understand if it was homes. It's cramming so many people into a small area that is already congested. So I think you're seeing the frustration that all the local people are feeling. And, you know, that's maybe speaking for myself, but everyone that I've talked to is feeling very similar. So, yeah, that is one of the aspects. And then I was thinking, if we were sitting at a rodeo and a guy sat in front of us with a ten gallon hat, how would we feel? You know, how would that make us feel? And that's kind of what we're looking at here as well. A thirty-three foot tall building with trees in the landscape is going to cut off any kind of view that we have. So for a homeowner myself, I live right at the edge. I'm going to be right in the middle of the center building. So it's not a, a, right now, we see whitetail deer all over. We see fox, we see eagles in that area. And I get it, you know, we understand that man is kind of taking over the world. But we live in Montana, a little more for, a little more of a outdoorsy feel. And this doesn't, this feels more like, it doesn't feel appropriate for our area. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, go ahead. I saw it. Come on.
I do have a question to ask of you. There were, there's two neighbors that are unable to be here today due to the plane crash at City Airport. Am I allowed to read a statement from them?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So this is on behalf of Susan and Carl Kratt on Rimrock Court, which would border this. And I'll just pull this up here. Okay, it says, "To the planning committee, due to some serious extenuating circumstances, my son Carl..." Thank you, thank you. I'll start over here. "...to the planning committee, due to some serious extenuating circumstances, my, my son Carl and I are unable to attend tonight's meeting. As a licensed real estate agent, for the past eighteen years, I have witnessed the growth in building in the Flathead Valley. There was at one point a serious shortage of affordable housing. Answering that call, builders, developers have built many apartment complexes, according to Kalispel Planning Department, in the past three years. And they have added and/or builded at this time at least thirteen hundred apartments to the Kalispel area. This number could be considerably higher if you include building in 2020. Many of these apartment complexes have numerous vacancies," and that was underlined. "This is just apartment complexes. Single-family homes, duplex and triplex have also added significant numbers to the affordable housing market. Currently on the market, under contract or pending in Kalispel, the number of properties under five hundred thousand dollars are as follows. Single-family homes, seventy-three, townhomes and duplexes, twenty-five, condos, seventeen, manufactured, eight, for a total of one hundred and twenty-three. The sold statistics in the past six months under five hundred thousand dollars are: single-family homes, eighty-six, townhouse, townhouse and duplex, fifty." Sorry, I don't have my glasses. Let's see, or condos, fifteen, manufactured, nine, for a total of one sixty. This is in Kalispel, reiterated with an underline, showing that there are ample housing and that has been per, ample housing that has been purchased and is available at this time. Coupled with a serious traffic issue, shortage of room in the schools, and particularly Rankin Elementary School, environmental issues with Ashley Creek, it is a poor plan to allow the North Meadows Project to move forward. Thank you for allowing this meeting that can hopefully show the planning committee the numerous reasons why this project should be tabled. Susan and Carl Kratt." And that was theirs. And then for myself, my name is Ricky Moffett. I live at one forty-seven Rimrock Court. And I'm trying my best not to reiterate or kick a dead horse over things that we went over last time. I did just want to respectfully request the commission formally terminate the proposed ninety-nine unit apartment complex dubbed North Meadows for the following reasons. I first would like to start off with the magnitude of degradation of the creek bed to the point where it's been deemed a slope failure. I just wanted to bring some photos of what this looks like. I don't believe any words could do it justice. Am I allowed to show these to you? It just shows the landslide that happened at one twenty-seven Rimrock Court. This was a retaining wall and their backyard slid off. There was also structural damage to include a deck coming off of their house. Their backyard dropped one foot a day for nine days straight due to heavy rainfall. And then there were also issues with the water mains. So it's just a combination of the soil, the structure right here ripped right off the building. The woman that lives in this home verbally told me it was horrific listening to her neighbors porch fall off. They didn't know if their house was going to fall off the hill. And she could hear wood snapping and nails popping out of the wood when this was happening. I know to this day, they still face issues with this. But anyways, here's just a shot. The proposed development would be right here. That's what they're talking about. There's no way by the law of physics that something on this side of the creek wouldn't do equally the same thing on the other side of the creek. It just doesn't work like that. So I would like to know where, I guess in more detail, where the geological surveys were done? And if this is taken into consideration, it's a really big mess. This just shows the damage and destruction right here to a little, a little better. This was from, I believe, an interior window of the home, the homeowner sent. Can I give these to you to see?
You can hand them over to.
Okay, thank you.
Staff.
I just don't think my words could ever say what those photos show when it.
Were you wanting those back?
No, no, you can definitely keep those. But to, to go on to just a few points and some clarifications from the last presentation that we saw, I would just, on the record, please urge you to terminate this proposed development. Some of the main reasons are just presentations, presentation deficiencies and misrepresentation of facts. The July eighth presentation mentioned North Meadows multiple times as, quote, "a fit to the existing neighborhood" and, quote, "a common sense move for the greater community," end quote. In reality, the presentation contained omissions, misrepresentations and selective framing, which I also feel happened today as well. Miss utilities were misrepresented, which was cleared up by you, Mr. Graham, where it was not, they were stated as being in place, they're actually just near. They're not in place. It would require water mains being put in, sewer mains put in, major infrastructure put in, which disrupts the ground that affects all of the homes on the side of the creek where we are on Rimrock Court. I think that's a major thing to just simply gloss over. I felt the community impact was ignored. No discussion of cost burdens or impacts on local infrastructure were included. It was just sunshine and rainbows and painted to be a beautiful thing with a coffee bar, and that's not the case. Expansion of utilities, roads and emergency services will not be cost neutral, so who pays for that? Setback distance misleading. The stated two hundred foot setback, which was stated in the past on July eighth on that presentation, is only achievable if measured diagonally from the farthest point of Ashley Creek to the most distant planned building. This is documented again in this presentation on the YouTube recording at two hours, three minutes and seven seconds. Green space is overstated, so they're touting five acres of open space and trails and all of these wonderful things. But per the Montana Cadastral, that's really just unbuildable land. They're just making, they're polishing a turd is what it is. They're just saying that this is something that it's not. I'm sorry for the crass statement. Flood plain omission. Portions of the site lie within the flood plain. This was not disclosed in the presentation and only surfaced via staff comments afterward. And this was from July eighth. The burden of proving accurate, competent, complete and relevant information rests with the developer, not the community. We've spent a lot of time, money, hours, sleepless nights, listening to neighbors, pounding the streets. I've got a sore heiny from riding my bike all over the place, talking to people. There's, this, we're invested in our neighborhood. This really has brought our neighborhood a lot closer together. We say hi to people we didn't say hi to before. People are active in the community. We work real hard for the things that we have and it's a working collar, a working class, blue collar neighborhood. We just want to try to protect it and make it safe. That's what we're, that's our main focus. The geotechnical safety risks, so to get back into this for a second, the failing slope. I feel like there's evidence to the extreme, that there is slope failure on this. And to just simply say, no, it's safe over here, but not so much here. Or just because it's not called a subdivision doesn't mean that it's not safe. The dirt is the same dirt, no matter what the area is called. If it's a single-family residence area called a subdivision or if it's a commercial division where even more people risk to lose their lives if, God forbid, something happened over there. The erosion, I would love to see something done to show where, is there a plan in case the erosion does continue to happen? I haven't seen anything that addresses any of the ugly, that is a very real possibility here. Weather, I would love to see a geotechnical report in all seasons, not just in summer, not just conveniently when, okay, there's no cars coming on this side of the street, let's take a picture. It just seems to be like there's a big pattern of moving the goalposts in this presentation and what they're presenting to you. And I don't think that this council, I know you volunteer your time and you don't get paid to be here. And I really appreciate you taking the time to be here. And I don't think it's fair that you should be gaslit and approving something that isn't worth it. It's not worth the ground it stands on. And not to make things personal at all, but I can't find anything that would be publicly available and readily, just to the average Joe person to see where this, this developer has a website to have a legitimate business. But what I did see was that it looks like they came to town six months ago in March of 2025. That's when their LLC was planted in Kalispel. And nothing has happened since then, except for this idea. So I think that that stands that, you know, I feel like that's not addressed seriously enough. It's just not enough for ninety-nine, ninety-nine units to have that. It's just by one. A hundred is the max, ninety-nine is what they're proposing. It's just not enough. So in my opinion, the streets are also not named in the application for the conditional use permit and for, for annexation, which I know has already been passed. But I do think that it's blatantly clear that half truths and, you know, really stretching things to the limit is a pattern that just keeps continuing to happen over and over again. And it's just not right. I feel like people of Kalispel deserve better. And that's why I'd like to leave that with you. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am.
All right, my name is Mark Top. I hope I can follow Ricky as, at least as clear as she was. I feel like I did a pretty good job explaining it last time, last month, so I hope I can do just as good. A few other points, so a lot was discussed last, last month on, road was established nineteen seventy-eight and we kept going back to that. I don't know how that's really relevant. Most of those homes were built in the nineteen nineties, early to mid to late. That, that sector that's right around there is about nineteen ninety-five, nineteen ninety-six, directly around that proposed complex area. So six hundred and sixty-seven trips a day is what we were told before. And we're going to shave that down to five hundred and make everyone feel more comfortable with it. I, I feel like that's intentional. I'm sure there's a lot of people that feel that way. The, the, the numbers are definitely being manipulated as best they can by, you know, putting the car counters and the, and the speed counters in the corners. The average speed is not twenty-six miles an hour on that road, unless you're accounting for people going around bicycles and pedestrians very, very, very slowly. That might, I suppose, add into that. The Beg Park game traffic and the Dog Park not being relevant or being viewed as not relevant is absolutely insane. It's still a factor. It's still a, a huge hazard when that's going to be happening. Bluestone is now being said twenty-eight feet wide at its most narrow point. It was twenty-six feet before. I believe it's twenty-six feet in one of the statements in the documents. So I have some videos of kids on bikes. I went around some kids a couple of weeks ago, four or five kids. I can send that, email that, whatever, if anyone wants to look at it. I'm sure you can use your imagination. The road's not wide enough and that is not going to be something that's possible for those children in that neighborhood if this happens. They will not be able to ride their bikes. It'll be way too much of a safety issue. And it's going to ruin that part of their childhood for them. So I don't know if you guys enjoyed riding your bikes around as kids, but it was pretty important to me. I'm going to reiterate some points that were made in the last meeting by a friend of mine. He couldn't be here tonight. So a lot of those people that live there, especially a lot of you guys on Bluestone, that, that's a low income, entry level home. You bought it twenty, thirty years ago. And that's your main asset in your life. You probably paid about ninety to one hundred and ten thousand for it. That's your big asset. That's what you've been working your whole life for. You're looking forward to retiring, not having a mortgage. And you have a single-family home and in a thirty-year established, single-home neighborhood and maybe some duplexes here and there. And all of a sudden, now there's a big apartment complex right in your backyard. It's not fair to the people that own those houses to change the deal like that. That neighborhood's been well established. Why hasn't there been anything built there yet? It's been sitting there thirty years, just vacant land. So there's probably an issue for it. Maybe it's not, maybe it's not up to par, maybe it's just more work than it needs to be. There's, there's some outlying factors on why that's not been built on yet. It's undesirable for whatever reason. I don't care if it's two stories or three stories. The point is, it may be more attractive to the people that have direct view of it, but it doesn't solve the safety factor. Safety factor and the traffic factor is what everyone's biggest concern is. Sure, it looks nice. I've seen the photos. It's relatively attractive. It just does not belong in this place. It's way too much of a hazard for multiple reasons. And the erosion stuff comes into play. It's not responsible infill. That was listed in the proposal. It's very irresponsible infill. And there's much better places for it. And we're back to the whole, the whole apartment thing. We don't have a necessity. There's just not, there's not that much demand anymore with all the vacancies in all the other apartment complexes. So a lot of the excavation that's going to need to take place for construction is going to be excavation of yardage of, of dirt that's not suitable for building. And then there's going to be a bunch more dirt brought in. So we would like to know, you know, how many trucks are going to be coming in and out for that? Comparing a garbage truck and the frequency of a garbage truck to a ninety-nine unit apartment complex construction traffic and aggregate trailers and dump trucks and the frequency of all of those isn't even comparable. I don't even know why that was brought up. It's not really that relevant at all. Emergency services, so is there, is it feasible and safe to have emergency services handling two hundred plus people in that one ingress egress complex? If there's a fire, it's going to be really bad. Hope someone can speak on that a little bit more. So that's the biggest part of, of that. And I'm going to go back to my notes. I apologize for all you guys having to listen to my brain work overtime here. So again, I'll reiterate that apartment living, it's a lot of transient people, you know, six months to two, three, two years, three years. Maybe they're just moving through the area. They don't have the attachment to it that a lot of us, you know, long-term residents have. A lot of those people have part-time jobs. They drive Uber. That's going to add to the traffic count in and out. I went and talked to them last night, too. It's a huge frustration point for them. And then, so the construction, I'll end with this. This is a, a little bit about the construction that I wrote. So in addition to the six hundred and sixty-seven trips a day, once it's fully built out, we're going to deal with probably what, a year, a year and a half of construction traffic in and out. So I wrote this post before the last one. No one's really considered the effects of the actual construction process very much before. It hasn't been mentioned a lot. It's been mentioned a little bit. So this is a pretty massive project to turn an open, partially marshy, wetlandish field into a ninety-nine unit, seven-building complex with several acres of concrete and pavement. There is one access point off of Bluestone Drive. How many pieces of heavy equipment will have to be hauled in and out? How many dump trucks, semis will be making multiple daily trips in and out for dirt, gravel, landscape materials, et cetera, et cetera? How many concrete trucks will be in and out when they start pouring? How many building supply deliveries off of large flatbed trucks and semis will there be daily, weekly? How many loads of pavement will be trucked in and out of the parking lot? How many contractors and employees will be in and out every single day of their work to and from lunch? The list goes on and on. These are all things that need to be carefully considered. I assure you that Bluestone Drive, Big Park and Denver Avenue will, will not survive the construction of this complex. And to, to close again, I'll just reiterate why hasn't this been built on yet. It's been built around for thirty years. So that's my time. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, Clyde Stenberg, DSMT LLC, eighteen-ten North Belmar. I'm sure, as we all know, we heard about the unfortunate event at the airport yesterday. It took eleven minutes for first responders to get there. Yes, there was multiple agencies, people were coming from Big Fork, Whitefish, Kalispell. That's on a faraway highway. We're talking Bluestone, some parts of it, it comes down to a one because of the way people park. Say one of those places catches on fire. But how, how are we gonna know if they're gonna be able to make it down there? I mean, if, 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 if the unit, one of the units facing Bluestone catches and embers fly over, catches other houses, but yet the fire department can't get down there because we have morons that are double parked on Bluestone. And so are we supposed to have a huge issue like Chicago where half the city of Chicago burned down? Not only that, August thirteenth or fourteenth, sometime between the last hearing and this hearing, eleven PM, KPD Sheriff flew down Airport Drive, Airport Road, sped onto Bluestone to a call forty to sixty miles an hour going down that Bluestone and Big Park. Yeah, it's eleven o'clock at night, but what if John Smith decides to beat his wife at dinnertime? And there's kids riding their bikes and KPD has to go sixty miles an hour? I wouldn't wanna be the, the officer to explain, hey, was responding to a call and accidentally ran your kid over, sorry. This needs to be considered because it's not safe at all. And I, if I was a gambling man, I would bet that there will be multiple deaths on Bluestone because people wanna drive in and out of that development. People have friends, ninety percent of, of Montana are alcoholics. You go to a Super Bowl party, you leave, how many of those are gonna leave either an Uber or sober? It's, it's not safe and it's, it's ridiculous. I mean, y- you wanna make a, a dollar, okay, cool. Do it somewhere else where we don't have to risk our families, our homes, our children.
My name is Jessica Chance, I live at nineteen thirty-four Bluestone. I was up here last time. And I've had a little bit of time to, I guess, work through some of the things that I was really hot about last time. I'm more hot now than I was then because I left thinking, maybe you guys actually cared what we said. I don't think you do. Um, but I'm gonna go through this anyway. The developer, in all of his pretty little talk, literally, I'm so insulted that these people gaslight the living daylights out of all of us. And then they go, oh, but we're benevolent, we're only gonna do two stories. Oh, well, golf clap for you. I wanna know if, if this is supposedly in all of these plans, they've come back with things that are going to soften the impact. If it's in a plan and it's supposed to be there, why do we have to soften an impact? Why does it have an impact at all? If it leaves an impact that we have to soften, it was not supposed to be there and it's not meant to be there moving forward. There's open land by the airport that they're not gonna finish developing. There are open places everywhere. We just opened a boatload of new places up by the bridge and there's a lot of vacancy. This is, I don't know what part of whatever plan this was, but maybe it was done during a housing crisis that we don't have now. We have an affordability crisis. I don't see how this is gonna help anybody. I'd like to know who's gonna pay all the money that I'm gonna lose in home value when I have all of this stuff going on. That's what I'd like to know. We keep being told that this fits into some plan, yet it has like a gazillion conditional use permits. If it fits in a plan, it fits. If we have to make and reword a whole bunch of stuff, then maybe it was not meant to be and it actually doesn't fit in the plan. I said that last time. It's like we're trying to smash this square peg into a round hole because somebody came here six months ago and had a dream. Um, I, it's just, I don't get it. The road is too narrow. The last meeting we had, the road was supposedly twenty-four feet. Apparently it's grown in the last month, so congratulations to Bluestone Drive because now it's thirty-two feet, I guess, or twenty-eight or whoever. I don't think that we're getting told anything. I think we're going through these meetings, people are giving people an opportunity who should have been here for the first meeting if they were really into this process. They should have been here last time. Now we've given them an opportunity to take everything that we said so they can reword it, make it cute, make it fancy and try to continue down this line of, but we're benevolent. If this is meant to be, how many trucks are we bringing in? How much dirt are we taking out to put more dirt in? It doesn't make any sense that you take a natural resource that's already there, replace it with another resource to make this thing work. If it was meant to be, it would be. And what are we doing about flooding? Because I bought my house and it was like, hey, congratulations, you get a sump pump for free. Oh, that's fantastic, holy smokes. We probably all have sump pumps. How, in, where, so, so where's the water gonna go? We're listening to this fine gentleman who had the courage to show up here today with all of us about, I worked in this, we don't all this geotech. It's the same company that did it for Rimrock and those houses are falling into the creek. So doing the same thing twice, three times, that's insanity. Like, why, why are we using this company who clearly didn't get it right the first time? We don't know how many other times they didn't get it right, but flooding's a big issue. If, what happens to these poor people that live here and their houses are in the flood? And then what happens when we have to get emergency resources through one entrance or one exit? And, you know, this thing about trash trucks regularly use Bluestone? Yeah, one day a week. It's not hundreds of construction vehicles coming through. And frankly, the amount of asphalt versus the that's based on the use today. That's not based on the use of construction vehicles going back and forth for a year and a half. Who's gonna fix our road? Who's gonna, I can barely mow my lawn without having to walk into the road. I cannot have more than two people at my house because I only have two cars that I can fit in my driveway and God forbid, nobody can park, there's a drainage ditch. I can't even entertain at my home because the road is too narrow and I actually want my neighbors to be able to get back and forth to their homes. It's, i- it's so unsafe, the kids, there's no sidewalks. What happens when it snows? Where are we gonna put the snow? I mean, this, this whole, none of this makes sense. It, the whole thing is, I, I strongly, I'm gonna stand with my fellow citizens here. I strongly urge that this project go away. We have been gaslit to death. These people have had phenomenal creative wording. I'm more insulted by the project now than I was when I left last time. The math doesn't work, I don't care how you slice it, I don't care if you use Common Core or what, it's not working. I don't believe that the community impact, I think that was done because they thought it would appease us. It actually ticked me off even more. Around a curve, really? It doesn't even include the dog park. But we're supposed to give them a round of applause because they listened to us. Sorry, doesn't work. The burden should have been on the developer. We have all now spent two nights here doing this instead of the developer making his case, being here the first time, which would have been responsible. And I still don't have any answers. The only thing that we've been given is more sunshine and Skittles and rainbows. And I think it's awful. I think I'm just gonna leave it at that, but I strongly urge that you guys terminate this. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. Uh, Sue Pruitt, excuse me, nineteen-ten Bluestone Drive. First of all, we all know South Meadows was built over a swamp. And if we don't know that, we should know it. So that's why most of us have sump pumps. So the ground is not stable. And Bluestone Road was built in nineteen seventy-eight. Well, uh, they overlaid it, but what's underneath? What's supporting that road? Across the street from me at nineteen-eleven Bluestone, there is a twenty-two foot, uh, travel trailer parked. And she can feel when the UPS truck drives down the street. Her whole trailer bounces like there's no support under the road. And there's gonna be so much traffic. And the reason why we have all that traffic, there's not one stop sign at any intersection. The only stop sign is at Denver. And everybody from all the side streets come onto Bluestone to exit and enter. And we have speeders and at every intersection, we will need a stop sign, a four-way stop so that it stops the vehicles on Bluestone as well as the side streets. We have hot rods speeding down there all hours, five o'clock in the morning, eleven o'clock at night, even during the day, at eight o'clock in the evening. I'm in my yard and I can't get my phone out fast enough to take a picture. It's ridiculous. And because there's only one entrance and exit to that housing development that you're proposing, I don't know where that traffic's gonna get in and get out unless you have a four-way stop there. And like I said, all down Bluestone, there's not one stop sign from Denver all the way to Airport Road. And nobody slows down. And that's why they take that road, because there's no stop sign. I'm tired of it. Also, if that study, geotech study was done for the road system, they should have come up with some kind of a support system to put under Bluestone Drive because it's gonna have to handle a lot of traffic. And I guess that's all I need to say. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Uh, my name is Sam Dennison, uh, from nineteen sixty-nine Bluestone. So I'm actually pictured, my house is pictured in one of those pictures that were up there. And I have lived, I actually purchased my house in two thousand nine and I have been there ever since. So I have seen the numerous upgrades to Bluestone. Uh, most people, um, some have, you know, new to the, the area, but I've seen them specifically talking about erosion and other things like that. They've raised the height of the street to increase the level of pavement that was discussed here. Um, I know that for a fact because I've seen multiple upgrades in that respect. They also tried to, at one point, charge the residents, increase taxes um, for drainage improvements that were made in the area. And in fact, if you, if you actually had gone down there and properly seen some pictures, you would see those, uh, drainage areas that they, that did not exist in two thousand nine when I purchased my house. Um, I was absolutely part of, um, the ever-growing, uh, sub-pump discovery plan. I had to dig my own because it wasn't included. And I was told that we were in a hundred-year flood plain. And I've had at least two major areas. The one mentioned, I think in late two thousand eleven, maybe two thousand twelve, uh, winter where I had almost, uh, seven inches of standing water in my crawl space. So the saturation is definitely real in that area. And I think, um, to have the weight of those buildings in an area even closer to a marsh area or slash creek bed, it would be slightly difficult to understand the developer's plan there and to, as before mentioned, uh, foresee, um, that, uh, even more weight uh, in those areas, including the traffic as well as all the vehicles and then of course, the construction equipment would be hard to fathom in that. There's absolutely, definitely, um, safety concerns. Uh, I don't know who in the city council approved the speed bumps on Denver, but huge applause is needed there. Would one hundred percent recommend? I can count on the number of nights sitting in my driveway, purposely putting out those, uh, you know, kid signs with the flag, um, just to slide them out to hopefully maybe slow down the people as I was, uh, raising my children. Uh, I actually had two boys and, uh, one of them, or both of them have been raised in that home. And safety concerns of them riding their motorcycle, our, by bicycles and, uh, traversing that to go down to the park has pretty much been there the entire time. I, I, I think that's an easy fix in the future, whether it's stop signs or, or some kind of infrastructure to help, uh, in that respect. But I definitely think that that is a, a massive concern. And if we're going to increase traffic, I truly believe that, um, that should either be placed or, um, in part, be, uh, a slight responsibility of the developer who will financially succeed, um, from this venture and will have a financial, you know, growth in their net worth because of that. So I think something, um, should be taken in response. And I do concur with everybody that the, uh, it was kinda convenient that this, the, 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 uh, markers for, uh, bringing in vehicles were placed at the slowest corner. I, successfully so far, but I know that the city is working very diligently on that um, and has improved the property because of that. So I wanna applaud them for doing that. It's been great for the community, but I think that, uh, it does need to be a significant note that, um, that, um, just kinda proves the point of the amount of moisture in that area. And so, um, that would be, um, all I have to add to that matter. So thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, Fyeson Ahara, one-one-nine Rimrock Court. Uh, we've been talking a lot about Bluestone and the traffic and, um, they will get the brunt of this traffic. But I do use the Sunnyside as I live on, uh, Rimrock, so I use Sunnyside and use Seventh Avenue. Uh, I had an experience the other day with the, uh, road construction on Fifth where they were resurfacing Fifth. I was coming home on Seventh and there was a blockage because the dump truck leaving the asphalt area got stuck at the corner of Sunnyside and Seventh because there was parking on both sides of Seventh Street. And the, there was, uh, construction on the house there and so they had workers. And then there's also a duplex being built just another side up. So in the meantime, we've got a dump truck that is stuck on Seventh Street with traffic behind them. I'm in a line of cars trying to go south because there's nowhere for anybody to go. So we're kinda go, okay, what do we do? So they had to find the owners of the construction crews to move the trucks onto people's property so the dump truck could therefore move forward and let us get back to our homes and to our locations. So if this is going to happen on Sunnyside and Seventh, this is a perfect example of what would happen on Bluestone and all these people that are representing the Bluestone home issues. Also, um, Mr. Foley, who does, is the owner of the Also, Mr. Foley, who does, is the owner of the Elwood Holdings LLC, only shows in public records as being a developer of individual, single-family homes right now. So does this applicant have the experience, skill, and expertise to build an apartment complex to the maximum capacity? Is this really infill, or is this an experiment for him as a LLC owner? So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Jaclyn Pipolo, 139 Rimrock Court. I spoke at the last meeting. I did not plan to speak tonight. But I was disappointed when I came here tonight and I found out that the development has already been zoned R1, because I thought the notices we received the first meeting was we were able to voice why we didn't want that zoning change. So I want on record that this development is not compatible with the neighborhood. And at the last meeting, I just asked if any of you, if you had time to come by and see this area, because you need a visual. And I'm really glad that Ricky brought pictures, because if you see what we see, if you experience what we live, you'll know that this development is not compatible. I don't know where the pictures, at what time of day, or actually they were taken on Blue Stone that that gentleman had on your slideshow. I drove today. I passed out flyers that Ricky had printed to remind people of the meeting tonight. And as I drove down Blue Stone, two things had happened. I was coming up on South Meadows. South Meadows goes this way, which will go into that development. Three children on bikes pulled out in front of me, two little boys and a girl. I stopped my car and I pulled over. The boys continued, the little girl just froze. And I said, it's okay, you can come. My first thought was, what if the development was going on? And right now, my heart's pounding, thinking about those three little kids. And a lady in the audience asked me to mention about speed bumps. Okay, on Rimrock, we come out onto Denver, and there's speed bumps. The city calls them speed humps. They don't really work. Maybe nine times out of 10, someone forgets. And I've seen cars bounce, fly over them. And another thing that happened was, as I went down Blue Stone, there was a big dump truck. And I honestly thought for a second, is something going on with the development? But in hearing people tonight talk, it must be with what's going on on 7th. But the point is, when this dump truck was coming down the road, I had to pull all the way over in, in order to allow him to pass. I, I don't understand the person who measured Blue Stone. It's honestly, it's not wide. You, two cars can go down, but the majority of the time, you're making space for each other. I take my grandson every morning in the winter. 7:30 AM, I leave Rimrock to take him to school at Stillwater Christian. And I know what the traffic's like, especially with the snow. I just, please, again, I wanna go on record. Please don't vote for this. It's not compatible. I've heard that word used tonight in the other developments with the park and then the Stillwater. Yes, it's compatible.
Based on the standards and modeling the traffic counts that were made, the vehicles going out Blue Stone towards Airport Road would be 500 of your total trips. In terms of the vehicle counts that were made, the Avalon Traffic Services used both radar and video counters. I quickly texted them here while we were, while we were meeting. And so I can't speak specifically to the tube counters, but a lot of the data was collected with both video and radar. In terms of the original traffic impact study, they're really looking at vehicle trips and peak. What is the existing condition? What is the proposed? And how does that impact each intersection? So as Keith from Public Works mentioned, they analyzed more intersections than were required based on where vehicles were likely to go. With that, the road width was somewhat incidental. So I don't know how he reported it in the original traffic impact study, how he maybe measured it. So we went out and physically pulled tape on the roadway to confirm the widths for this meeting, based on the concerns that were brought up. As Keith mentioned, an urban local street in the city's standards today is 28 feet of pavement, which is the minimum dimension we measured. The 32 feet that are referenced is actually, as you continue west, sorry, I've lost the microphone. As you continue west towards Denver, you hit a newer subdivision, which followed a slightly different standard. But again, the urban local street is a 28-foot pave width. In terms of the single access, the dead-end street length meets the rules, the code requirements for having a turnaround, which is provided in a cul-de-sac. That short section, yes, it is one access in and out. The fire code does allow for up to the 100 units, as was noted by members of the public in the staff report. And that's a rule that's in the fire code. So the fire chief ultimately will have to review and sign off any permits for this project, which is partly their role as for public safety. From a building perspective, multifamily is gonna require fire suppression. So I would be very surprised if any other homes in that neighborhood have fire suppression, but these will have, it's effectively a commercial classification for fire suppression, which will drastically improve the response times that you have, because, I mean, there's a reason they're in there, and it's for public safety. So there was a comment about the geotechnical engineer being the one who designed the system that failed. And I wanna clarify something, that they were brought in by legal attorneys after the slope failure occurred. Alpine Geotechnical's a reputable company. We've worked, I've worked with them through the, so it started out as NTL Engineering. He's went out on his own. He's a geotech, Kagan Rutz is a geotechnical engineer. We've worked with on countless projects and is a competent, high-quality engineer. The one thing on the Rimrock homes where the slope failure occurred, there's a couple of things that I think are a key port, key point to acknowledge, is the homes themselves were 15 to 20 feet from the top of slope. The backyard was improved. I believe a retaining wall was built that added load basically to that existing slope. So combined with, there's a storm drain that splits the two lots that's dumping water onto that slope, combined with potentially poor compaction, based on my discussion with Mr. Rutz, and the added load from the retaining wall and the backyard improvements contributed to that failure. If you go back in aerial imagery prior to, I think it was in the 2009 timeframe, you can actually see the backyard of the main property that was impacted. And everything on either side of it is nice and green. And I think the article in the beacon referred to vegetation removal and within the riparian area. So I think you had a combination of kind of a perfect storm. But I wanna be very clear that the engineer that's providing the geotechnical study for this project did not have involvement in the design of that subdivision or those homes. They were purely analyzing it from a legal perspective. What's interesting is the article from 2011, there's a lot of quotes from the Conservation District, but not of actual professional engineers that were involved in that. And I'm assuming part of it was, there's some ongoing legal things that were going on. So I do not believe there is any direct quotes from, from a professional engineer. I would like to note that our slope stability report from Alpine Geotechnical, I apologize, I don't have the exact number, but I think it was in the 30-foot distance. Our buildings are set back 70 to 85 feet. So we're trying to give that distance to that slope to, well, for lots of reasons, but part of it is to give it as much space as we can. I may have mentioned this, so I apologize. We will be doing slab-on grade. Multifamily, it's common to do that, so there will not be crawl spaces, there will not be basements. The final design has not been done, so I can't speak to the removal of soil and importing of it. What I can say is the material underneath the slab will be imported to be of structural grade. The native soil that you're bearing on for a two-story multifamily building, the load on the soil is actually not a whole lot different than the residential for a home, whether it's single or two-story. So the actual imparted load, pounds per square foot on that soil, is typically of similar value. I'd like to speak a little bit. There are multiple tracks. And so in speaking in generalities, from the top of bank that leads down into the riparian area, from the top of bank to the south along Blue Stone and to the Rimrock to the west, and Belmar to the east, is approximately 10 acres. Of that 10 acres, there's about 140,000 square feet of impervious area. And the math works out to close to six acres of open green space. I'm not saying we're claiming that as amenity area, but it is an area that is not getting improved with impervious surfaces. Montana Cadastral notes the unbuilt, or the unbuildable, unsuitable area that's in that four and a bit acres that was noted. The area from the top of bank down into the Ashley Creek corridor, extending north across the creek towards 11th, is what counts for that four and a half acres. So we're not claiming, we're not developing, we're not doing anything within that area that's being called, being claimed as open space in our, we're not claiming it as open space, I guess. In terms of floodplain, the dog park was mentioned. That's actually quite a bit lower. I'd have to study the floodplain maps. But the floodplain line for our project was shown in our application, and it's down the slope from the top of bank. That's, so we're not working within the floodplain, we're staying out of it. In terms of the ownership and why things haven't been developed, it was tied up in a trust. I don't know all the specifics of it, but within the last one and a half, two years is when it was finally available to be developed. So it's not because there was some desire to not develop it, but I think it was more just the legality of it. I'd like to touch a little bit on impact fees. So currently this, I know this is probably preaching to what you understand. Currently, it's county property. Upon annexation, they'll pay city taxes. So their tax bill will be based on the law and what's required. As part of the development and upfront, they will pay an impact fee. And the impact fees were adopted by the City of Kalispell to try and mitigate impacts to fire, police, storm, water, sewer. And a preliminary calculation from Public Works was about $414,000. That'll be paid to help mitigate impacts to services that the city provides. Then their recurring tax bill every year will be contributing towards each department, based on how that tax bill is split up. I think the utilities were talked about a little bit at the previous meeting. I think it was maybe a little bit misunderstood that the subdivision that was developed, South Meadows for that short stretch, stubbed water and sewer to the limits of the road, which is common practice in the, in the city's standards. The development of extending those utilities, paying for all the improvements on site, is borne by the developer that's not, that's not being paid or contributed to the city. It's not an area that's a part of a capital improvement plan, so it's, it's a separate standalone project that'll be paid for by the developer. The development group has experience in multifamily. We have a lot of experience in designing multifamily. I know that the perception is maybe we were baiting and switching or gaslighting. I think the idea behind providing additional information is that is all information that would be required as part of the permit process with the city. So we were trying to help expand on the information in the application so that people could understand that we're trying to, I'll call it mitigate impact. The, the rules would allow us to be a lot closer to the pound, boundary lines. We're trying to give that separation to help soften that. It's purely to try and, try and be good neighbor. In terms of, I know you all understand this. The city adopts the rules, the growth policy, the zoning, all of the public works standards, all the planning standards, all the parks and rec standards, as a mechanism to help protect property rights for both parties. So neighbors have property rights, our client has property rights. And the idea with these rules is to try and provide a balance and a framework so that people can't just come in and do whatever they want. And I think that, you know, development and infill, you know, this infill here helps maybe eliminate sprawl outside of the city limits so that, you know, outside the boundary of Kalispell, we're not taking on maybe more. I know the boundary gets annexed and, you know, properties do add to the city. But I think concentrating infill development is an important way to help maintain the buffers to the public land that we all hold near and dear. I don't know the exact number, but I think Flathead County is approaching 20% public, or excuse me, private land. So the majority of the land that's available in Flathead County is a very small portion of what's, what the county's land area is. I think the other piece that I just wanna touch is the conditions of condition, of the conditional use. A lot of these are standard. A lot of the conditions that are on there are the same ones that were reviewed for the Silverbrook Modernized Project. So the conditions aren't to create exceptions to the rules, but rather hold the project accountable through that permit process. And I think it's important to realize that Planning Board and City Council rely on the staff, the professional engineers, the licensed planners, and all the folks that are hired by the city to make sure that the conditions are here to help protect that the project at the end is complying with this conditional use permit. I appreciate your time. I, it's unfortunate that some of the folks that left couldn't hear some of those, because I think it would add some context and hopefully help answer some of the questions that they do have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Kim Smith. I live at 1827 Blue Stone, just west of where the intersection of the project would come in. Well, I know, we have a pretty good turnout here. I can say that I walk my dog every day. I know so many people in my neighborhood, and I've been speaking to them. I've not met one person that thinks this is even anything, good is not any word in their sentence. So we currently have an online petition of over 300 people have signed, maybe around three and a quarter right now. So that speaks oddly to it, too. I guess, I just, everything that everyone said here tonight is so important. It, it just really can't support it. If you look at things like Silverbrook or any of these apartment complexes, they're all off big roads. There's not one in and one out. It's multiple entrance and exits. And again, they're on big roads. They're not on a tiny little road that, I, it's just unbelievable to me. And the owner, developer, I'm sorry, they got stuck with this land. Maybe it wasn't a trust, that's fine, and that's why they couldn't do anything. But their problem of being stuck with this land is not our problem, and it shouldn't be dumped on us. They can build five homes, and none of us would say anything, but, you know, 100, no. So please consider everything everyone said and put a stop to it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Julie Lubick. I live at 144 Rimrock Court. I'll try and keep my comments brief, because all my neighbors have basically covered everything. I just wanna say that I'm in complete agreement with what everybody says. One thing I do wanna add is that it was mentioned that the development will be a seamless integration to the neighborhood, and I respectfully disagree with that statement. We all bought our homes because it's a nice, single-family home area. Lots of kids playing, people are able to walk their dogs. We did not buy our homes to live in a high-density development apartment complex. One of my neighbors already said that, you know, when he was a renter, he didn't so much care about his property. But we all, especially on my street and surrounding areas, have a lot of pride of ownership. And I don't know if, you know, a development like that will contribute to the pride of ownership of that area. And being born and raised in Montana, I've lived here my whole life, you can really see the open spaces being gobbled up. And I really think we need to, you know, prioritize and balance people over profit. So, thank you so much.
And thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, Council. James Williamson, 25 Fourth Street East here in Kalispell. I'm part of the development team that put this project forward. We've worked with Jacola and the current property owners. So I wanna touch just on the history a little bit. So in the application, you'll see that Jerry Bag signed for Jacola and Roger Foley to represent him. And the Bag family actually developed the entire Blue Stone project, which is why, you know, it's called Bag Park. Then they donated the dog park as well. And so this is the, you know, final phase of, you know, their development there. And over the last year, working with Mr. Bag, Roger Foley, all the engineers, the city staff, you know, there was a lot of consideration into what could be developed here, because, you know, I guess by right, they wanna, you know, develop this property and finish it out. And so, you know, when considering that, You know, when considering that and and Jerry has just as much, you know. Uh, invested into this community as any of us and, you know, definitely wants to uh remain a a good neighbor. Um, so, you know, there was a lot of consideration put into, you know, what could be developed here and and we definitely sympathize, you know, with some of the. Implications of growth and development. I live here as well and, you know, I think we all feel those uh implications of growth throughout the entire valley, whether it's traffic or. You know, construction traffic, all of that. Um, so, you know, taking that, you know, there was consideration put into that and we took a lot of time to work with the city and gather their feedback, there were. Several different variations of this project that were put forth and uh, you know, I guess, you know, the walking paths, all of that. There, there was no intent of a bait and switch there, it was, you know, to try to open that up for the neighborhood and. I do just want to say that, you know, I'll be here around afterwards and would love to uh, you know, answer questions, I know the neighbors have concerns, so. Um, obviously, we're we're here and support the project, but want to be uh as good neighbors as we can and try to. You know, talk through some of the implications of this and obviously what it's, you know, what it's doing and what the change means, but, you know, the intent is to try to. Finish out this development with the uh current owners and the development team, thank you.
Thank you sir.
Good evening, my name is Julius Macor, I've been a resident at one twenty seven Rimrock Court for the last ten years. And have spent the last forty two years in Montana, growing up in Summers, a neighbor of Jerry Beg, just for the record. Um, I'm a wildlife photographer, I've worked in journalism at the Flathead Beacon as well, I didn't plan on speaking tonight, but I want to speak from. An expert experiential place, I spent thousands of hours down at that creek bed and our property looks directly across. At where the proposed uh apartment complex will be. Over the last three years, I've watched people, um, a gentleman come out there with his dogs, which gave the cue to the neighborhood kids that they should also. Come out there and they've started to come out there with, oh god, electric bikes, lawn mowers, et cetera. I've watched them and I've, you know, photos of all this stuff digging into the hillside. You know, where the the easement from the apartment complex will be. You know, I think we're just having an identity crisis here in the Flathead Valley, the house that I grew up in Summers now. That my dad built in the early eighties has a cell phone tower in it. Um, you know, that land was surrounded by field and just the Summers Elementary School. I think that stewardship in this case is the most important thing, that's a rich riparian land, I've. Too many species of birds to mention, river otters, bear, eagles, blue heron. Muskrat, beaver. Fox, all of those things, there's a sinuosity in the, in the nature of a river, how it bends and meanders. And we're lucky enough to live in a place where our riparian habitat is some of the richest the world still has today. Putting an apartment complex in an established neighborhood on grounds that are not only migratory, mating. And very well populated by wildlife is a disservice to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you sir.
John Pipola, one three nine Rimrock Court. I had originally wanted to talk about the the zoning change from um R four, is this, can you hear it? From R four to R A one for multi-unit apartments, but that's already a done deal from what I understand, is that correct?
Last meeting.
The zoning change has been made?
Last meeting.
Last meeting, okay. So the only other thing I would bring up, I can't really add anything to what everyone else said. Is the sidewalk issue on um Big Park Drive and Bluestone. When that development was put in in the seventies, um, they obviously didn't anticipate the type of development that's taken place. All the later developments uh that were put in by. Other developers in the nineties mostly. You know, on Salem, uh Teal, there's sidewalks, curbs and gutters, it's developed. So when the city put in and developed in the last ten years, they really did a really good job with the uh the dog park. They put in the pavilion, they got the things for the children, it's a nice park. Um, the only access to that park for people that live in that whole area back in there, all those development areas. Is through Bluestone and down Big Park, neither of which have sidewalks. So, the, this, the numbers that we were given last time were over six hundred cars added a day. And um. You're saying it's a thousand, now it's five hundred, so it's a fifty percent increase in traffic, I think it's going to be more than that actually, that's an estimate, I think it's going to be more. So a fifty percent increase in traffic. And there's not going to be any way for families, for women pushing a stroller or children playing. To have access to that park that you that you people put in. And how are you going to use the park with that level of traffic? When basically the pavement goes to people's front yards, that's why curbs and gutters were never put in, there's no room for it. It would encroach on the front yards of the people on both sides of Bluestone. That's why there's no curbs and gutters there. So, the city had decades to plan for future development of that twelve point three acres. And and to to ready that for the traffic load and for the safety of pedestrians. It's not going to be safe with, it's not safe now with a fifty percent increase in traffic. Without sidewalks. Going the complete length of Bluestone all the way to Denver and down Big Park. Logistically, I don't know how it would happen, I think the city would have to purchase four feet off of the fr- the front yards of the people that live along that. But um especially in winter, there's just no access and I think it is um with a fifty percent increase in traffic, I think it's going to be dangerous, it's going to be a volatile. Traffic hazard for the people that live up there and um that's all I got to say, thanks.
Thank you sir. Any further public comment? What? Any other public comment? There's just one time. No, they didn't.
Hi, Melinda Husky, I live on nineteen fifty five Bluestone and the picture that you showed was our driveway. And what's missing are the RVs that people have, because a lot of people are on vacation. What's missing was that people parked after coming home from work. When we try to get out of our driveway, sometimes we can barely back out into the street without hitting some car that's parked there. And we understand their driveways uh have personal vehicles in it and they have no other choice but to park on the streets. So it's hardly ever clear like that picture showed. And living in where we do, we have to go to the mailbox, now we could drive it every day, but it's easier to just walk it, there is no sidewalk. So and my niece and soon I'm going to be having a grandson and I want to walk them there. How am I going to do that? Because they're right, I'm either going to have to go into somebody's yard. Or walk them on the street and we're in people's way. Not too long ago, we ordered a pergola, my mother really wanted that to sit on the deck to see the beautiful mountains, which will now be. Wow, mom, we moved you here to see an apartment complex, woo, hope you enjoy sitting on the deck. When the men came to deliver the boxes. They're looking at me like, where do I park to unload? So they literally had to park in the middle of the street and unload the five boxes. What if a fire truck had had to come through? What if an ambulance, they had the road blocked, probably for a good fifteen, twenty minutes and I was embarrassed. Going, I hope none of my neighbors need to get through, but there was no other choice because there was no way he could, they can't park on the side. There was just literally no other place but to park in the road. So the people that live there, I think you all understand that and. It's not an easy answer, but you don't get to a sidewalk until after you've passed Denver and then you can have a sidewalk. So in the meantime, you're hoping that you and your dog and your niece won't get hit by a car on the way to trying to get. To the sidewalks, you can get to the wall area to walk. So it is a major concern, if you add more traffic, it's going to be a problem, thank you.
Thank you ma'am. Any further public comment? New public comment? Okay, I'm going to end uh public comment on this item. And uh. Try to figure out where I'm at here on procedure, we need a motion to pull this from the table. I'm looking at you guys, I'm running the meeting.
What do you want me to say?
I just need a motion to pull, to pull uh K Z C twenty five oh one.
Motion to pull K Z Z, what is it, one four one?
Twenty five zero one.
Twenty five zero one off the table so we can discuss this.
K K C U twenty five oh four.
Oh whoops, I'm in the wrong one here.
Twenty five oh four.
Yeah.
Off the table so we can discuss it. Second that.
Motion seconded. Uh, I don't think there's discussion on that, is there? Yeah, it's just a.
Oh, we can't, we can't ask questions?
Well, let's get it on, no, not until it's on the table, we gotta get it on the table, so all in favor of the motion uh signify by stating aye?
Aye.
Okay. It's on the table now and uh.
I have a few thoughts.
Well.
Are we going to have to wait on that?
Yeah, good.
We gotta get a motion. It's off the table now, but we gotta get a motion for any kind of recommendation that we're going to do for.
You can have discussion. Um, you can ask questions, any clarifications, but.
We'll get into questions.
Certainly looking for then. A motion from the planning commission, um, it could be a motion to approve as. Um, findings of fact as the staff report had originally laid out, you can amend it, you can deny it. But um either way, the commission will need to make a recommendation. Or should make a recommendation to the city council regarding the conditional use permit.
Okay, discussion, questions of staff.
So I actually did take them up on their offer and I went out with my daughter, out on Bluestone twice, I parked at the park and I walked and that was psychotic. Um, it was fun, but I don't recommend it and uh I thought, I wondered. What if we put it to next month and had a traffic study when school starts, when everybody's home, when the buses are coming through and maybe there's a little more. Logic to the traffic, is that, is that maybe possible? Because um have you seen a bus try to turn, they're not exactly that skilled sometimes. Just a thought.
When it comes to traffic studies, I I know that there's a lot of angst out there in the general public, I've been there. Um, as far as when they choose to do their their traffic studies, whatnot and everything, but if, cor- correct me if I'm wrong, do. Is there i- in a traffic study, there's a a multiplier process in there that goes through and. Cause I know I remember with Tronstad, you know, when it came to the, when they were doing that traffic study. February. So I I don't understand and I can't speak to it, so wh- what does that process look like, it's it's not an nefarious process that they're doing.
That's correct, yeah, so the tra- the traffic counts are taken over a period of time. Um, that can vary from, you know, engineer to engineer that's doing the traffic counts in this, in this case, I think it was over the period of three days. That they took the counts. Um, then you use tables or seasonal seasonal tables that uh MDT publishes every year. Um, those tables have correction factors or or uh. I guess just factors that multiplication factors that you apply per the day of the week and per the month of the year. And so they take all those factors, um, multiply it by what was counted per that day. And then they can get the um average annual daily traffic, so that's what you're shooting for, is not the. Daily traffic that was measured during the study, it's what would be the average annual daily traffic um for the entire year. And it can vary um quite quite a bit, so in the summertime, the traffic is actually higher and typically the um. Counts are, the factors reduce the counts because over the winter months. Um, the counts are smaller throughout the day, um throughout that seasonal part of the year. Um, and then speaking to the bus traffic from what um MDT has told us over and over again. Is that the um traffic that you see in the summertime from the influx of seasonal traffic. Is relatively the same as what you see during the school year for traffic. So that's, you know, that's what MDT tells us as the transportation engineers in our area.
Alright, thank you.
Can I ask a clarifying question on what the city requires in that traffic impact study? As I understand it, they're purely looking at capacity, is that accurate?
Looking at a a couple of things, um, so the standards require that they look at intersections to determine a level of service drop. Um, if there is a a drop in level of service, which means there's a delay.
Vehicles, correct?
What's that?
Four vehicles?
Four vehicles, so they're taking the current conditions, they're inflating them over whatever the period is required, so. Uh, build out is typically what we're looking at and that might be five years or three years depending on the development. They inflate that annually um forward and then they look at, here's the conditions for the development. Uh, or for the area if the development were not to occur. And then they apply the counts, so in this case, the six hundred and sixty seven um vehicles per day. Were uh based on the number of units in that and again referring to the Institute for Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual. They get that six hundred and sixty seven, they apply the distribution to it, so like uh Toby was saying thirty percent headed west, seventy percent headed east. And in this case, that is four hundred and sixty seven was rounded up to five hundred vehicles. Um, added to the um, the vehicle counts for the roadway. So they analyze each of the intersections and then they can take a volume to capacity ratio. For a roadway to also determine a level of service for the corridor. Um, in this case, I was looking at it earlier today, um, this. At at the build out, your level of service would still be an A for the corridor, where you typically see issues is at intersections where there's turning movements. Um, and just as kind of a gut check from what we see in the analysis versus what I've heard over years here at the City of Kalispell. I'm not hearing complaints about congestion on uh Bluestone, I'm hearing complaints about speeding on Bluestone. And typically, uh, a roadway has, well, always has an inverse relationship between volume and speeds. So as the volume increases, the speeds decrease, as the volume decreases, the speeds increase. So the fact that we're seeing thirty two miles an hour in the eighty fifth percentile for the roadway is an indicator that it's under capacity right now. As capacity increases or as volumes increase on the road, the speeds would tend to go down. And just one other clarifying thing, there's a lot of references to the tube counters that were out there, that was not the development. Um, engineers, that was the City of Kalispell, uh, we just recently did counts at the intersection of Beg Park Road and Bluestone. And the determination, um, the reason for that is volume counts for the determination whether there needs to be additional traffic control devices at that intersection. That analysis isn't complete yet, those counts were just, the t- the timing of it happened to coincide with um since the last meeting, so. Um, just as a clarifying issue there.
Thank you, so they don't count pedestrians or bikes or anything as part of that? That it's just purely traffic and whether the road can support it, basically?
The tube counters will provide a speed, they'll, because if there's two of them, it's a speed can count plus a volume count and then they can come up with a classification. And so you can look at the type of vehicle, basically counting the number of axles that um is occurring there. Um, the Abilin Traffic um or Transportation Services, they um estimated based off of their counts, a two percent heavy vehicle. Um, volume for the overall volume.
Okay, yeah, and uh, yeah, I I've worked with Abilin before. Okay, yeah, and uh yeah, I I've worked with Avalon before uh on other projects. So in and that's fine, I guess. It just feels like the the traffic impact study is. Maybe not as comprehensive as it should be, especially in a subdivision. Um where you do have a high number of people out and about, walking, walking dogs. Going on bike rides, kids playing. It just seems like that is a a factor that should be. Somehow quantified and and addressed, um and it just feels like there's a hole there in how these are. Analyzed. I'm not sure what the answer is to that, but it's just something I've been thinking about.
That that would be outside of city standards and just even. The, some of the national standards, although there are some cities that are looking at that and heading in that direction. But at this point in time, there's nothing within the city standards that would, that would lead us in that direction. Um I would say in that regard, in to pedestrian connectivity. Um you hear a lot of issues that are already there. They're not born by this development. Um so similar to the Tronstad. Um i- it's very common in older subdivisions that weren't built to a standard, so there is a process that. Can be implemented to fix that, through like a regional S I D, bring it up to city standards. Um it would not be born by a developer, that would be an exaction, it's against federal law, state law. A developer is not in charge of fixing all the citywide problems. They can mitigate their impact. Um on their development, it's not a developer's issue legally. Um to fix all the city problems, I guess, whether it's uh the congestion because of Beg Park. Um the sidewalks and such of that nature. So just a little context of. Yes, there typically in today's day and age, that subdivision would have been into a city standard, there is a process to put those in place. Obviously, it requires um neighborhood, you know, like I said, we've heard a a lot of comments in that regard. So if that was truly an issue now and in the future, there is a process in order to get those in, but it would certainly require some. Um community input and basically desire to have those.
Well, and I think, were you done? I'm sorry. I think that, you know, one of the questions I I have kind of written down here as it comes to like the sidewalks. Especially in this area. You have the older part of the area than the newer part, it's, that's a change in city standards for sidewalks. Prior to, there was not a a city standard for the development of si- of sidewalks. I don't know when it was, when it was uh adopted into code to have sidewalks. But when the the subsequent development in the area went in, they were required to provide sidewalks in in those uh. In those subsequent subdivisions or I guess phases, you could say. So um, you know, I wanted to touch on that. So it, one way in, one way out. We're we're looking at a different, uh the difference of multifamily versus single family residential. And I think that probably, and then maybe you could speak to it, but. The reason why, yeah, cause I understand what the neighborhood's saying, you know, one way in, one way out and there's ninety nine units. And why would it be different for a single family residential? And I really think probably the difference is because A is fi- fire codes, that's federal fire code.
Well, yeah, it, I mean, it boils down to, yes, it's fire code, so.
The other aspect would be.
A single family subdivision, you would have to have two a- accesses. If you say there's a maximum of fifty off of single access, more than thirty would would require fire suppression even in a single family home. There's a maximum distance of a single access via city street, multifamily has different standards and it really boils down to the type of construction.
Right, and so when you have multifamily such as this versus single family, single family's not required to have fire suppression systems. Built into them, multifamily are required. So what happens is a fire breaks out into an apartment complex. If they're not waiting for the fire department to get there to put it out, the fire suppression system is already working. Uh once it's set off. So I can look at that and and be comfortable that that's the reason why there's. In the code, one way in, one way out. Does anybody else have any thing?
Well, I'd just like to find out that through subpath analysis that they've proven. That there shouldn't be any access issues with a fire truck getting in there and turning around. The design is specifically for that. At any rate, I thi- I think that is a non-issue to me.
Um I do wanna actually, I wanna go back to the traffic study. I know that we talked about the difference between the city study and the actual study itself. Can you pull up the map to show the physical location of where the uh points were for counting?
For the city?
No, but for for this, for Avalon.
And then I don't know if you can zoom in on that.
So slide twenty nine?
It's pretty hard to see on that. So that shows all, that shows all the intersections where they took turning movement counts and then um the volume counts. The star in the middle that's right below the red.
And so the split being the thirty seventy in terms of the specific ratio. Um the cutting of that down to five hundred from six sixty seven, more of that relationship, I guess. The the one thing that I wanna ask is, these studies, are they ever done? And I know that Montana State has their particular litigious relationship with this. Uh is there a uh a number of, a number of fire or some type of uh. Uh evaluation for with and without sidewalks? I'm not trying to say that sidewalks themselves are the key element checklist. However, the context is, is that, I think I'd asked you guys last time, is there a location physically in the city that we've allowed? Where sidewalks are not there and most of the, most of the examples.
Yes.
Have been, yeah, they've been physical relationships with county layer areas or other areas that have been undeveloped. But there had not been such uh from what I remembered, physical location. That is uh oriented towards schools or oriented towards children uh going to parks and these kinds of things. That it does that, how does that work? It's a big question, but it's.
I would say that um. The traffic study does not address the pedestrian component.
Okay.
It's not in our standards.
Yeah.
So we wouldn't recommend going there because it's not in our standards.
Yeah.
However, um if you start to set the precedence of not doing developments because there's not sidewalks, there's gonna be development no more. Cause the city has gaps everywhere.
Yeah.
For certain points in time, two mile drive, three mile drive.
Yeah.
Tons of development to the west of town, three mile drive has huge gaps in sidewalks.
Yeah.
Two mile has huge gaps in sidewalks. Now, we have a a process in place for, over time, we have a plan to address those issues. For example, we could have a plan to address this issues, it's obviously the the need and the want to, but um. Downtown Kalispell, our studies show within blocks of Peterson, tons of missing sidewalks in existing neighborhoods.
Yeah.
Uh east side, southwest, southeast, so when you start to consider that. Um infill will be very difficult.
I thought I had something else. Uh so, uh one, I guess one follow up question about the. The relationship with the roads and parking. Part of the bigger, I guess, topic is like Seventh Street or. Third or Fourth uh East. The city council made the decision to remove the one-way roads because of traffic and the relationship of different things. Sometimes I've noticed some, I guess, neighborhoods say no parking for street for safety reasons. Um in this case, I don't think it's necessarily like, I don't know what to do with that. But the reality is, is Seventh Street can be quite sketchy when you're going up and down and we've had one person say that. Uh even on one of the streets that they had to literally back up and move people because people were parked on the side of the road. Uh not allowing for construction to go back and forth. I'm not saying that the city is or is not responsible or the builder is responsible for any of this. But how is this behavior explained and improved? Do you have any suggestions?
I mean, the the city standards do speak to minimum requirements for allowing um on-street parking. And to be honest, if if we're, an analysis was done on Blue Stone today, it would have to be signed no parking. Um because the city standards require curb and gutter in order for on-street parking. Um those minimum standards were, you know, reviewed um and added into the standards based on some of these needs where we were. Um having to go through and um. Analyze problem areas. The the standards speak to different classifications and what is allowed for a classification, so local road. Um the face of curb to face of curb um width is analyzed. Um has to have curb and gutter and then if those dimensions shrink. Then we start looking at alternatives for parking on one side of the street versus both sides of the street and then add a certain dimension. Um then parking is not allowed anymore, but in this case with a rural cross-section. Um if an analysis was done today, um that would be signed as no parking and that's. Um Fifth Avenue West that was referred to here recently, we did an analysis on that street. And parking was limited to one side of the street, so the the residents in here. Um have probably noticed between, um I think it's south of of eleventh and Sunnyside um Drive. The um east side of the street has been signed as no parking and that was based off of a parking analysis. Based on complaints that that we receive in the city, um and then we go out and do an analysis and see. You know, where does this lie within the current city standards and then um we move forward with it that way, so. Uh the the higher the classification of the road, the more restrictive um those requirements are. Um a local street, you anticipate that you're gonna have to queue around parked vehicles. That's, you know, the the old part of town here, when third and fourth were changed. That was a a big um learning um curve for a lot of the residents that used that as thoroughfares. But the uh goal of that was really to turn that roadway back into a local street. That was um suited for the residents on the street. Um and so, you know, we have provisions in the standards, I guess, is the short answer.
So a couple times we've heard uh through in public comment about um. The view going away. Uh we're gonna touch on this in a a couple of different ways, um. This were to develop out differently, let's say, a different proposal had been coming through, let's say it was single family. That scenario of setback from these existing homes. Uh from their property line, that minimum setback would be, and then the maximum height. It's, go ahead.
Yeah, ten, ten, forty five feet high.
And forty five.
I mean, and so if you were to look at that aerial imagery, for example, let's just say mirror the single family lots that are there. Hypothetically, if you could meet subdivision regulations and just mirror that development, you would have a wall of single family homes down the backyard.
Right, so.
If that's what you're asking.
Well, it it is and I'm I'm kinda getting to a little bit of a point here because in in. Sixteen years of being on this board, you do hear a lot of about, you know, my view. And I'm sympathetic to that, but I don't know that there's anywhere, and I'll ask the question in state code or anything. There are there sh- view shed protections. Anywhere?
No, and the state is, as you know, we've been working through the land use plan, increased height. So are there, there's a lot of things here that, you know, even this process in general, trying to mitigate these things. Um so through this process, you can try and mitigate neighborhood impacts and address all these things, because you know, as a planning commission. I didn't wanna discourage, you know, the pedestrian impact and such, but as a commission, you do have to take the public comment. As well as the findings and the traffic studies from professional engineers and you take that all in. And you make your judgment as as a community member, right? So you do have that discretion, but it does have to be based off of findings and facts, but. Um yes, there's um as far as view sheds, there is no protections in that regard. And if anything with, you know, increased land use controls, I mean, we're talking a lot about parking. You know, we've heard a lot of reservations from city staff about decreased parking standards because you could see the types of issues it leads to. At least we see in the city of Kalispell in regards to our streets and stuff, so, cause it does, when there's limited parking, it's gonna create other issues, so. Um yes, there's a lot of, a lot of things that you can look at, but the view sheds will not be one of them. As as long as it's in in accordance with the zoning, the zoning is supposed to take that into account in the neighborhood compatibility and such.
Well, and I guess where I'm kinda going with that is, you know, hearing in public comment tonight. You know, some of the aspects of, well, I'll I'll get into a couple aspects of it, the wildlife.
Yeah.
We're talking about wildlife. And the. Fact that, you know, it's there. But then I'm hearing that we're okay with it being developed uh de- developed out to single family standards. But that development's development, so. Also, the subsequent phases of this build out from Blue Stone West, you know. As it went west. It filled in over a lot of habitat. Um provided a lot of housing. So, you know, taking and hearing comments such as, what's this? I forget the name, this cul-de-sac here in this picture. The rim rock.
Yeah.
Um, you know, so, you know, public comment. Mentioning looking out over a, you know, a green space or an open field, that's great, I mean, I. I'm sympathetic to that really, but that open field is private property. And one of the things I've thought about in this last month going through, um like. Again, time and time again, it's this struggle between private property rights. And it's almost like people that wanna develop their land don't have private property rights. But if you boil it down from neighbor to neighbor. If you have one neighbor wants to go and build an extension to their house out further into their backyard, cover a porch or something. And that goes and blocks the view of the person to the left or the right of them. Who's got the, I mean, he's, that that person has the right to go through the standards that we would have, you know, the process. To go and do that addition or covered patio or whatever it is. So this is in a larger scale scheme, of course, but. You know, the standards go through and the process go, and it, as we heard in public comment. It goes and sets the 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 table, the the. The codes goes and sets the table, the conditional use permit goes and mitigates it to where. If a developer says they're gonna do something, well, it's in the conditions that they gotta do it. So I I've been, believe me, for the last month, I've been thinking all this stuff over in my head a lot. So, um.
It might not really be like the view that really bothers the 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 neighborhood, it's probably the fact that they wanna put apartments right there. While they own, oh, they all own their own little section of property, but then this one person owns this big property, let's like. Two hundred people move in, it's not their property, they don't care possibly. And so it could potentially just wreak havoc on those individual backyards. And so it could potentially just wreak havoc on those individual backyards, you know, that what hap- that's what happened with the landings.
You're making a lot of assumptions.
Possibly.
I'm just saying that those are assumptions. They're not, you know.
But we're all, we like, we're all looking at projections as well, so we're, I'm projecting that, you know, possibly could happen. It's not saying it would, not saying it won't, it's just that's what what one of the concerns I heard was that, you know, I own my property as an apartment. Renter, I didn't care, now I care. What about these people? Not saying they don't deserve a chance, not saying that, you know, it is private property, I get that, just. Hundred ninety-nine. I don't think it fits.
All right, in regards to land use, historically, we've segregated uses. I mean, the development account or the commission approved earlier. You see developments starting to integrate with each other, eh, it's kinda the new way of doing things. Um but multi-families being incorporated into pretty much every development we do now, whether it's. So in one sense, yes, there's certainly some lack of infrastructure in regards to sidewalks and such. And there's these traffic concerns that the commission will have to consider, but as far as land use. We, the city developers, there's multi-family immediately adjacent, single-family all across the city of Kalispell. I don't feel like we should be saying those people, these people, there's, it's a housing need. Um it can work both ways, you can have a, they can have a bad property owner neighbor as well, so it it. The assumption can go both ways, right? So the idea is, can you mitigate it, can you make it fit? Um it is kinda how development is happening now because of the housing demands and the housing needs um within the community. Certainly, historically, it's been single-family, historically Kalispell's been single-family, but that is likely not the future, so just.
Well, like in comparison to the Silverbrook that we talked about earlier. They're building on the other side of the property from the neighborhood with their own fancy entrance. This has the one entrance on a pre-existing road that is highly trafficked when regularly, like I know it doesn't look like it's highly trafficked. Like airport road, but it's, it's a neighborhood that's set up for the single-family lifestyle. And Silverbrook is and is not alternating, so.
I'm gonna go and I've. I don't live there, I have lived there. Um, my sister lived there. I've driven this twice since this has come up. Um, the latest being before the meeting tonight. I uh, the last time I I didn't drive. The Denver way, I came in from the ball fields, I came in turnaround left through the ball fields. Um, came in through Denver and I was going through and. I was not, I wasn't speeding or anything, I was just. Going and yeah, those speed humps. Like, I I drive a one-ton truck and I don't know what hit me, like seriously, I thought. So then I thought one, you know, oh, like, okay, there's one, so I just kinda keep going, I hit the second one. And I'm like, is there a reason those aren't marked like across the top? You know, so like I could slow down for him or something? Oh, yeah, right, no. I'm like, wow. So, um, my point is, both times I've driven down. From when I lived there. Versus when I've driven down Blue Stone twice. My, what I took away from it was, I was like, wow, this. This is different than what I remembered from. And and I don't know if it was the time of day that I drove, it was, it's about five thirty. So I keep went, came from there directly to here. So I would have thought, well, maybe people were working, they should be showing up for home, you know, at home or whatever at that point in time, but. Maybe not, but it was wide and it was open. And there was no, there was, there was no, yeah, there was no, there was no traffic on it when I was driving, I'm just saying what I saw. I don't live there, I'm not, I'm not casting aspersions on what I'm hearing, I'm just saying that's what I saw when I was there, so. Um, in that regard, during business hours of. Construction, when you're doing it uh for their, that's during the day where people are gone. So, you mean, you could throw the Saturday in there. You know, if they're working Saturday, which I would probably think they probably would be, but maybe not, I don't know, I don't know what schedules would look like. But, um. I just wanted to throw that in here that I'd hit the speed humps. Hey, and I was not speeding, I was not going fast, I was literally doing like twenty because I did not wanna get here tonight.
I know that this is a maybe a bad thing to start a small dumpster fire, but I do wanna bring this up. As the city's interest possibly in the background of your minds. I heard, and as I understood it, that that particular road was possibly in the past. Going to connect to Seventh. Is that historically correct?
It's within the, it's within the city limits as it is. But yeah, we don't have, it's not part of our transportation plan in order to do that.
Was it ever, or was it just some discussion that happened in the past that was nefarious and people just brought it up as folklore?
I I had, I can't, I don't know that, I can't go back to when, I would have to go back and look at the minutes of the original.
The reason why I bring it up is the use of Denver is limiting. Because you do literally have to go around a giant nice little circle and then come back down and and go back to Seventh versus just go straight through. My point being is, I personally think it would alleviate a tremendous amount of pressure. That the city and the citizens are discussing. If there was some type of pathway through, and I know that we don't have an outbound to the. Um to the bypass and that's a different subject, but at least being able to go northbound instead of going eastbound. Uh would help alleviate some of the pressure and I'm just, from my observation, that's what I've heard in the past and I don't know if. Uh Mister Beg uh changed A, B, and C, but the fact that the road goes up and stops.
Yeah, there's, so Keith, Keith mentioned it actually is part of the transportation plan, so. Depending on, so there's concerns with that, obviously you have floodplain. You have wildlife habitat and now you're building a another road, you got fill, you got a lot of things that kinda go against a lot of the public. Testimony you're getting, but yet then you also get all the benefits of traffic circulation and being able to move people around, so. Um if the development were to say be single-family and they needed then that second access. That would be there, but as multi-family with the single access and the objective analysis of the traffic studies shows that it's not needed.
No, no, sir, we're in our discussion.
Are you talking about South Meadows connecting to Seventh, is that what you're saying? Okay, thank you.
So one of the things I was thinking tonight, um. Actually, I think about it a lot because it's Senate Bill three eighty-two in the disaster that it is. And I'm just gonna be frank with the neighborhood. You don't know, it it should a negative recommendation come out of here tonight to the city council that. Three eighty-two is a game changer in development. It was passed to stop opposition development to development. This. That's why they passed it. It's going statewide, the city of Kalispell, for all the garbage that we get for going through and passing subdivisions and. And multi-family developments and stuff in the ci- in in the valley, we're the only ones going through and doing it. That has created a lot of inventory. And I should note that because there's inventory out there, does not correlate to whether or not an applicant goes through and gains approval for their application. That's neither here nor there, you don't go and say, well, we're not gonna entertain. What you legally have the right to go and try to get because there's. More inventory out there, only you can add to the inventory at the, you know, you you could stand. You know, you gotta think of it this way, this this developer could stand the chance of going through and losing money on something like this because the more inventory that gets out there, the. Lower the price per rent could get, and if he builds over the price of ri- of what rent could be, you're in a bad, bad spot, so. Um, but my point is, three eighty-two, if this comes out of here. With a negative recommendation to council. Eventually, three eighty-two hits. You may end up with, I I'm not saying that, I'm not saying the developer would do anything like this, but the thing is, is there could be something different. You know what you've got here. I understand it, I understand you don't like it, I understand it's the. The change of the neighborhood, I understand it, it's more, I understand that. You know, the view out your backyard is. Go, it it's, you know, this happens, it goes away, I get that. But it was never a guarantee. I hope that a real estate agent didn't sell you on that, that you have this big open space out back behind you. And that it's never gonna go through and develop, that's what happened at the other one just down the road where it was. Ah, what was that? They thought it was a park and it was private property. Off of. Off of uh Airport Road. I can't remember what the name it was, but, um. Up here, we're in a, we're in a tough situation where we have standards, we have process. We have an applicant with private property rights, we have a neighborhood with prop- private property rights, we take everything that we have. And. Discussion, information that falls in line with standards and we weigh this information. We only provide a recommendation to city council, it then goes to city council. There is another. Meeting with city council and that goes a little differently than the planning board. Um because they have the final say. But I just, I wanted to, I ju- I'm just trying to be real with you when it comes to three eighty-two. Because things are gonna change, the way process works, this wouldn't happen. It's gonna be completely different, so. Um, again. Is there anything from the rest of the commission? I I I I know it, this is a, it's a deep issue, it's it's really deep for me on this because, because of three eighty-two. And we're, what I'm seeing here and everything, but I wanna make sure we get this right with the neighborhood too. So.
So the only things that I I personally like feel that, I'm not saying Seventh needs to be developed or any of that stuff. I'm just saying I hope that the city finds a plan to alleviate some of the safety concerns. Not necessarily because it's the builder's responsibility or anybody's. On the other side of the fence, my worry is that the eyes turn into H's. And I'm pretty sure, I hope, everybody knows what I mean. Cool.
What did you say?
The eyes don't turn into H's.
Went way over my head, I don't know what you're talking, okay, it's fine.
Design for particular housing units.
Okay, alright.
You know what I'm talking about.
So it sounds like I should know, but I got too much going on up here, so, um. To to what you're saying about the safety aspects of it, they exist now, this is, this is. This is the same thing as Tronstat where it goes, is like everything that's being spoken of existed then. The aspect of this with the sidewalks can be fixed.
Yes.
There's a process for it to be fixed, however, the neighborhood would not like that, they would not like that process.
But the, this doesn't uh involve the federal government, so it might be.
It's a special improvement district and and we've, that they've, didn't we just, one just come in with a.
For sewer improvements.
Sewer, yeah.
This neighborhood, including this development, could be part of a, an SID. That for sidewalks and they could put sidewalks, but there would be an additional assessment on their taxes that would go along with that, you estimate the cost. They would all have to vote for it, you get all concurrence, so as a neighborhood, if it's that big of a concern. That would be the route to go and or the processes, the city is part of their transportation plant, goes after grants and. Is lucky enough to get a grant in order to do some improvements along these, these roadways. Other than that, there's, there's no way to upgrade. City streets, so.
And and was that was Mister Dennison was speaking to about maybe some taxation concerns? Is it possible that there was some historic thing that went on with water drainage, stormwater? Storm drainage?
There was, there was a storm sewer project that was done in twenty fourteen and there's two phases of it. Um and um as as part of that, there wasn't a uh. A taxation of the property owners that was any different than it is today. Um but there were, um, a lot of the catch basins included stubouts. So that um people with sump pumps could connect into the catch basins and go into.
Of. KCU twenty-five dash zero four. Just based, based how it was written in the, the report unless there's any, any uh. Additional conditions that the commission wants to place on it. I didn't really gather any in in my mind during what I was hearing for any of that, so.
Well, I'm ready to move the city, that the Kalispell Planning Commission adopts staff report. KCU dash twenty-five dash oh-four has findings of fact and recommend. Kalispell City Council that the North Meadows CUP be approved, subject to the conditions as published.
I'll second. Yeah, that was me. Jared, was that all right?
Okay. Uh discussion on the motion, I mean, we've kind of already been discussing at length here, but now we have a.
City council on September the second.
If approved.
If approved, yeah.
It'll go there regardless, it goes to council regardless. Depending on the recommendation, so. We just need a recommendation one way or another.
Yeah, well, was there any further? Uh discussion. On the motion, it's, we've, we've already really kinda discussed it prior to one way or the other, I I. I guess what I'm gonna say is I'm, I am gonna support the motion, I, it will go through. Uh to city council, there's gonna be another opportunity for public comment at the city council, city council may look at this differently. Um, I think that. From what I heard tonight. Through the break as it being tabled, additional um discussion. On. What? Oh, okay, got it, I thought maybe I messed up, so anyhow, my my, wha- what I'm saying is, based off of what I heard, the subsequent information that had, that we've. Gotten in the last month, I think it really answered a lot of questions I had in my mind about a lot of it. Um I feel easier about this. I am sympathetic to the neighborhood because I I just, I know that change is not something that comes easy. Um, it's happening all over the city, it's not just you guys, it's happening all over the city. Uh so I guess with that, I'll just, I'm gonna call for roll call.
Joshua Borgart?
Aye.
Tate Walker?
Aye.
Pip Burke?
Aye.
Shelby Lechrone?
No.
Doug Kaufman?
Yes.
Chad Graham?
Aye, so that motion. Aye, so that motion carries. And September second, city council, same chamber, seven o'clock, that's when that'll be up for, uh, discussion. So, I'm gonna close old business, uh, new business.
Uh, the, just a quick update, Reserve at Johnson Ranch, the project there at Stillwater and Old Reserve did. Get through council, we'll be looking at second reading here at the next meeting, but that was a unanimous decision by council. And at next month's Planning Commission meeting, we will have a, uh. One action item or one application for an eve setback amendment to our zoning regulations. Our zoning regulations right now do not allow encroachment for an eve, as lots are getting smaller. Um, it's actually pretty common for, um, cities to have some sort of eve encroachment. There's fire separations once again and things like that, but as lots get smaller, um, it's something that we're running into, so there is an applicant looking at. Providing a, an eve setback, so we'll change, have a zoning tax amendment that'll come along with that. And, uh, also have some draft chapters for the land use plan. And we will be at the fair this week talking about the land use man, the land use plan and development and all sorts of things, so if you. The viewing audience or anybody in the audience wants to stop by, say hello and discuss items such as this. Or get any information, that's where we'll be, and the next meeting, like I said, all these items will be before council Tuesday, September second. That's it for new business.
Okay, before I adjourn, we're gonna have another. Lively discussion on Senate Bill three eighty-two. Um, it's the eleventh in a series, doesn't say how many there are in the series. I guess it's just gonna go forever, but, uh. Stick around if, uh, you wanna pay attention to that, and we are adjourned. And we need a break.
Yes.